Something tasty?
It's like fudgy chocolatey brownies.
Oh, okay.
I would suggest, yeah, I would suggest you don't squeeze it. And I mean, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna squeeze it.
Thank you, thank you. I don't know how to do that.
Good advice, I'm sure.
We make them on water.
They do, they're very good.
A lot of good stuff.
I know.
Have you ever had the Coors, um, tie?
No.
Now, it's like... But that's gonna bring you up hard, you see.
The thing with the kids is they would, we would, uh...
Have them run down to the friend's house.
Yeah.
Wouldn't bite your back.
And die.
So, black suit and red tie, I guess that's the order of the day. How'd you go? He's a re- you're a rebel. You're a rebel, let's face it.
He, he pays the way.
Oh, it's all right? Good evening, it's, uh, five thirty-four. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Mayor Edward Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Kelly Krebs.
Here.
Councilmember Jean Goss.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Parkhurst.
Here.
And Councilmember Christine Lo.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum this evening.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'd like to invite, uh, Councilmember Parkhurst to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Inspiration.
Thank you. Please stand if you're able. And ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I racked my brain to try to come up to something, to come up, uh, to come up with something for tonight's inspiration. I don't know, Valentine's Day, maybe? So, a little bit of history on Valentine's Day. So, the first recorded Valentine's Day was all the way back in the eighth century, and it was recorded as the Feast of Saint Valentine. It didn't turn into a romantic holiday until the fourteenth or fifteenth century. And it, it was kind of associated with, uh, the society's, uh, focus on courtly love. Candy flowers and the association with Cupid came along then in the eighteenth century. And that, uh, famous, uh, heart-shaped box of candy debuted in eighteen sixty-eight by the, the chocolate company Cadbury. Cards then came along in the nineteenth century. Interesting fact, in, in Italy, um, Saint Valentine's keys are given to lovers as a romantic symbol of unlocking someone's heart. We also find, uh, some of the first mentions of Saint Valentine's Day going all the way back, uh, to, uh, Shakespeare's Hamlet. And the, the, your classic rhyme, "Roses are red," dates all the way back to Edmund Spencer's Fairy Queen from fifteen ninety. Bringing it all the way back to, to local and to present, um, California's got a strong connection to Valentine's Day. In twenty twenty-one, the state of California produced forty-one billion pounds of milk, eight billion pounds of wine grapes, two-point-four billion pounds of strawberries. By the way, it's about ninety-nine percent of all strawberries in the U.S. comes from, come from California, and sixteen-point-eight million, uh, stems of roses. So, with that, Happy Valentine's Day, everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember Parkhurst. Okay, we have an agenda, and, uh, if we could, uh, get a motion to approve the agenda unless there are any changes that would like to be made?
Move to approve the agenda?
Second.
Is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously, we have an agenda. And, uh, may I get a motion for the approval of reading resolution ordinances by title only?
So, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And we have a, uh, set of minutes from our last regular council meeting on January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Madam City Clerk, were there any changes emailed to you, or do we have any? Go ahead first, and then I'll ask the dyes.
Um, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Parker suggested some changes, some amendments to clarify the minutes. They were non-substantive changes, and they were, they've been incorporated.
Thank you. Any other changes while we're here? Okay, is there a motion?
Move to approve the amended minutes?
A second.
Second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Goss. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The minutes are approved. All right, we're moving right along to mayor and council, uh, reports. Uh, please report out any, uh, activity related to city business. Anybody like to go?
I'll go.
Councilmember Goss?
One short one. I did my first, uh, meeting with the, uh, Community Services Commission on the thirtieth. It was their first meeting of the year. It was great to see everybody there. Went up, introduced myself, they already knew who I was. So, uh, didn't, uh, do a lot of business, but, uh, it was interesting to hear their reports on the things that they're doing. And all the commissioners are very active, and I expect later in the spring, a lot of, uh, really important business will be coming in front of them. So, when I hear of that, I will bring it to the council. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Councilmember Goss. Anybody else?
Um, I had a pretty eventful three weeks. Don't know how to change that on my laptop. Oh. I think it was both of us. Well, that's not gonna be fun. Okay, um, so first, uh, the Chamber of Commerce had their meeting, and it was pretty exciting because we're planning for the Wisteria Festival. Um, a lot going on there. Um, we are gonna be able to see the Wisteria, um, Wisteria vine, it looks like. Um, also, um, they will be hosting a downtown hall meeting for the Downtown Improvement Plan that's coming up next Wednesday. Um, so if you guys are in that business district and you want some input, that's gonna be a great event. Um, and then the Planning Commission, um, what I brought up last time during Agenda Items to, in the future, they kind of were talking about changing, um, some of the municipal codes also to follow and comply with state law. So, that was kind of interesting. And then I went to the League of Cities New Council Academy, and that was probably one of the most, um, worthwhile events that I could have gone to as a new council member. Um, I learned more about budgets and finance, and also about, um, how cities, the do's and the don'ts of a council member, uh, good practices for our city, and it was also a great way to collaborate with all of the other new council members and city management teams, uh, for every city, pretty much in Southern California. So, it was really exciting. And last, we went to, um, Councilmember Garcia and I went to a fundraiser for the Boys and Girls Club of Monrovia up at the PAC Station up at Chantry Flats. And what was great about that is I learned so much about how those services provide to our city for both Arcadia, Monrovia, and Sierra Madre, and what great job the Boys and Girls Club of, of our, Eric, local areas do. They hold tutoring hours, they have, uh, social-emotional learning and health, um, community service activities, and, and they want kids to, uh, invest in a, in a certain schedule to be there, um, more frequently so that they really do help promote overall well-being and, and success for, for kids, especially at-risk kids. So, that was really great, and the PAC Station looks fantastic. Can't wait till that road, till Chantry Flats and Santa Anita open up. That'll be exciting.
Thank you, Councilmember Lo. Councilmember Parkhurst?
So, um, had two meetings of the Clean Power Alliance. One of them, um, we talked about, actually, two, at both of them, we talked about the high gas prices, and those high gas prices are impacting, um, energy prices. The reason is, is that, you know, while we get many of, well, most residents in the city get a hundred percent renewable energy, it's not twenty-four-seven renewable energy. And so, sometimes, you know, during, um, uh, peak periods or during, uh, um, evening times, some of our energy is associated with gas, um, and so, um, that is, is impacting our, our, our costs. Also, there are some, um, some aggressive plans to increase the amount of renewable energy that we've got. And, um, we also have been able to moderate some of the, the price increases because of aggressive contracting that happened, um, in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. And so, since, since we are, um, long in those purchases, since we purchased more than what we needed, it's actually, we've got more renewables coming online, um, now, uh, and that helped reduce those, that, that impact, uh, of having to buy energy from natural gas. The other thing from the Clean Power Alliance is that they are developing electrification and E-EV charging codes to help, um, cities update their building codes for new residential and can, and commercial construction as well as major remodels. So, it's something to, uh, for us to, to potentially consider, it's something to bring forward to, to learn more about. That was the Clean Power Alliance. Also involved with the Senior Commission, I stopped over at the Hart Park House prior to this, and they had a, a full house there today. Uh, a really nice Valentine's Day event. And, uh, they also have, uh, the applications for Older American are being circulated. And so, um, trying to, to, um, actively get people to, to apply for that. I am blanking on the deadline. Do you, maybe you've got in your notes, Mayor, or maybe someone from staff has got the, the deadline for that. If not, we can make sure that gets out to folks. But they're still, uh, actively recruiting for, uh, the Older American Award. Um, and then there is going to be an I Love L.A. Senior Bus Excursion on March ninth. Um, and that information will come out soon, it's being finalized, uh, right now. It's gonna be an excursion to the Archery Museum for a two-hour docent tour, and then lunch at the San Antonio Wondery right after that. Back to you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parkhurst. Mayor Pro Tem?
I have no report. I will have a report next time on activities with the, um, Natural Resources Committee and the, uh, League of California Cities, or CalCities. I do have on my calendar, just from a prior meeting, and, um, noting that tomorrow, there is an event at the Sierra Madre Women's Club from ten to noon by the Pasadena Village, which I believe is a, um, organization out of Pasadena in our greater area, um, promoting, um, community between, um, among our older citizens. So, um, that, those folks were here, I think, a couple of meetings ago to promote that. So, I just wanted to put that out there again tomorrow at the Women's Club from ten until noon.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Uh, I have, I have a short, um, report as well. On January, sorry, uh, February second, the San Yerba Valley Council of Governments met. We're still meeting, uh, via Zoom. Really was not too much of an eventful meeting. We are meeting again on the sixteenth, uh, this coming Thursday, two days from now. Also, there was a short meeting, um, with the County Board of Supervisors on January ninth, and I'm looking forward to the next meeting with the Board of Trustees for the library, um, and I'll report out once that, that occurs. Uh, now for some city announcements and events. As many of you know, the city has been going through a process of developing a strategic plan. It started last summer. It's continued, it's been continuing on. Uh, the first event that we had was a public safety town hall meeting at the, uh, Sierra Madre Room at the former Yak, uh, now at the Y. Uh, the next, uh, meeting will be tomorrow evening. Public Works and the Chamber of Commerce are gonna be, um, hosting a downtown business district town hall, um, here in city council chambers at six P.M. Uh, the key topics will include a discussion on the Sierra Madre Boulevard Downtown Sidewalk, Sidewalk Enhancement Project and the Water Main Installation in the downtown area. So, this, this portion is really specific to, um, the downtown district and business. There will be an opportunity later, uh, for the residents to talk about, um, uh, public works and those types of things. Also, on March ninth, our Community Services and Public Library will hold, will host their joint town hall meeting in the Sierra Madre Library. Again, uh, March ninth, uh, both Community Service and the library. Flyers for the event are in the back of the room. Registration is required. There's a QR code on the flyer, um, or you can call the library or visit eventbrite.com to register for that event. And, uh, finally, as, um, Councilmember Lo mentioned, the Wisteria Festival is scheduled, uh, for March nineteenth. Uh, save the date and come out and visit our local shops, crafters, food vendors, and the Sierra Madre Auto Show. Uh, flyers are in the back for, back of that as well. And thank you for bringing up the, uh, Boys and Girls Club fundraiser, that slipped my mind. But I do remember the whiskey tasting portion, that was, that was quite fun. And that concludes my report. Okay, so now we're moving on to, uh, public comment for items not on the agenda. And, um, I'm seeing a lot of familiar faces out, out here today, but, um, uh, just wanna remind you that these are for items not on the agenda. We do have an agenda item that I'm, I'm, I'm assuming more people will show up later in the meeting, at the end of the meeting regarding, uh, Alverno Heights Academy that is specific to the master plan and the conditional use permit, um, regarding Alverno Heights, uh, Academy. So, if you really wanna speak specifically about filming issues or, um, make public comment about the villa, um, those aren't part of the agenda item, so you can make those, um, now if you specifically wanna talk about those issues. I understand there's some cumulative issues that have to go along with that, so I'm not banning, uh, all speech about, um, the villa or filming. But, uh, if you wanted to specifically talk about those issues, now would be the time. Okay, thank you. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first speaker card is from Deb Sheridan.
All right, Ms. Sheridan, you have three minutes. I know you know the drill.
Good evening, Councilmembers, Deb Sheridan, and this is for Ed Miller, who could not be here tonight. He lives on, on Lima. We'd like to correct some of the statements in last Saturday's Mountain Views News front page article, "Referendum Negotiations Fail." The following need clarification from last week's article. One, the city council erred by not making the land use change conditional on the Meadows Project. This project has given the developer huge variances that we homeowners cannot get. New Urban West would still be able to provide the same financial incentives they had offered the city as part of the Meadows Project. Two, the article says city manager Ray Noso had sixty interactions with New Urban West and Protect Sierra Madre. In fact, he only met with Protect Sierra Madre only two times. In those meetings, the negotiation team said they'd withdraw the referendum if the city and New Urban West agreed to potential concessions. The city and New Urban West rejected every single major item, instead agreeing to five minor concessions. Three, the key points that the city rejected were: A, set the date of the referendum later to allow more time to discuss and negotiate for its withdrawal; B, require the Meadows to conform to the general plan, particularly the R-one residential code, which the rest of the city follows; C, reduce the number of houses to thirty-four from forty-two; D, the city would not allow the pro, the project to proceed until the right-of-way to Carter Avenue and its improvement is secured from L.A. County; E, the Chicago Passionist owners agree not to develop the remaining Modern Doloresa property; F, the developers present a comprehensive plan for the redesign of the park, county access roads, Carter Avenue, and the entrance to Bailey Canyon Park; G, the houses built in the Meadows could not be enlarged. What they did agree to was to reduce the hours of construction on Saturday, do a traffic study, potentially putting sidewalks on Lima. The article says New Urban West, uh, offered to cover the legal fees, and the negotiators would only agree to having the city do it. This is not true. It was not a negotiating point from Protect Sierra Madre. New Urban West investors pressured the city to hold it as soon as possible, and the city complied with them. Protect Sierra Madre had tried, has tried to be honest in our communications with the city and the local paper. We invite Mountain Views News to contact us directly for comment when covering these issues in the future instead of writing a one-sided article, and you, city manager, to correct these falsehoods in the paper. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Sheridan. Madam City Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is David Gordon.
Good evening and happy Valentines. I'm here in my guise as president of, um, of Sierra Madre Playhouse to tell you and the millions of people who are live-streaming this event that, um, we're in the middle of our festival of solo shows. And one that's on currently is Call Me Elizabeth, and it features an astonishingly effective, um, Caleb Barker, who plays, uh, Elizabeth Taylor at the time when her marriage to Eddie Fisher is breaking down, and she's filming, or not filming, Cleopatra. And, um, this is on, on Friday night, Saturday night, and Sunday afternoon, and tickets are still available. In connection with the show, we are tomorrow night having a showing of Butterfield Eight, the first film for which Elizabeth Taylor got an Oscar. The next show after that is called Die Lady Die. It's about Diana Spencer. And, um, again, it's another solo performance. It's, this time, it's a musical about her life from beginning to end. And again, uh, as our, we are now doing more and more often, there's gonna be a film in connection with that, and the film is Roman Holiday. Because this is a film in which a princess escapes her guardians and discovers true love. That is gone, going to be on Wednesday night in two weeks' time. So, I just wanted to put this in context. The Playhouse is changing its, uh, format of its, uh, of its, um, artistic offerings. And we are, we will continue to do some plays, but, um, as a result of A-B-five, the economics of putting on plays have been transformed, and many small theaters in, um, in, uh, Los Angeles have been forced to close because they can't afford to pay the, every single person as an employee. So, we are doing more solo shows, but we're going to do more films, we're going to do more musical events, we're going to have storytelling evenings, we're broadening the range of what we do. So, the Playhouse is going to be live and doing something many more nights a week. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Mr. Mayor, there are no other speaker cards.
Uh, I, I think there's one more, uh, coming down from, uh, Chief Amos. Thank you, Chief.
Uh, yes, this is from Mary Carney.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
And thank you very much for allowing me to speak this evening, and I hope you all have a happy, wonderful Valentine's Day when you get home for dinner this evening. Um, I'm here today to talk about the, um, Sierra Madre Women's Club upcoming golf tournament. As you know, this is going to, this is going to be our very, very, very first ever golf tournament, and we are absolutely so lucky to have Susan Henderson as our tournament director. She's an avid golfer and does this sort of thing three or four or five times a year, so she knows what she's doing. We're in really capable hands. Uh, it's going to be on Friday, March seventeenth. It's a Saint Patty's Day, and Patty is spelled P-A-T-T-I. So, we have a, we have a, a woman elf there. It's going to be at the Santa Anita Golf Course. It starts at eight in the morning, you check in at seven, starts at eight, there'll be a luncheon. Uh, we're looking forward to some really wonderful prizes, including a ten-thousand-dollar hole-in-one if anybody is interested in playing golf. We're looking for foursomes. Uh, we're looking for people to sponsor different levels, you know, from, from the title sponsor to a luncheon sponsor to a hole-in-one sponsor. We have pots of gold, goody bags, tea signs, journals, patrons, foursomes, and individual players. Uh, we're looking for sponsors for youth golfing groups. I understand Brookside has a, a youth golfing kind of thing, so we're looking for sponsorships as well as people to sign up and come and play. So, um, I'd like to have these passed out, if you would, please. There's a sponsor letter on the back, and we have, I left some brochures in back as well. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Carney. So, we're gonna have a golf tournament, March Madness, and the Wisteria Festival all in one weekend, so it should be fun.
March Madness and what?
And the Wisteria Festival. So, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a great, great weekend.
Yes, and if you think...
With Saint Patty's Day as well.
Right. And if you think getting hold of Susan Henderson is hard now, she's also kind of one of the co-coordinators for the Wisteria Festival, so, you know, get in line.
Thank you. Any, any more speaker cards? No.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that closes public comment for items not on the agenda. Moving on, uh, to the consent calendar, we have six items. I'll go, I'll go through, um, each item and ask if we have any questions, um, from council. So, item A. B? C?
Hold on.
Maybe C.
I don't know, I don't know which ones are which. Hold on. This is the Water Main Protection Project. Yes, C.
Please.
So, I, I did notice that in the alternatives, uh, one of the recommendations or alternatives were to decide to not award a contract tonight and then have them, have there be a rebid at a better time when material might be more accessible, which might reduce the cost. So, I was just wondering, is there any reason to think that that would actually be feasible? Or, or, and/or is there any reason to think that doing a different project, you know, elsewhere in town would change the nature of, of, of the cost, um, and ma, and, and make that less expensive, uh, now?
Superintendent McGee?
So, I'm hearing the con, you know, if we rebid at another time and do it when materials are less expensive is what the question is?
Yeah, that was one of the recommendations in the staff report, which just got to, got me thinking, you know, do we really think that there's gonna be a, you know, a time in the, you know, near, near future that, that's actually, you know, that, that materials are gonna be more expensive? That's, I guess, the first question. And then the second question is, is there any reason to think that if we were to take a different project on the priority list, um, that those materials would, you know, would, would be, it would be a different type of project such that the materials might be cheaper at this time? To reorder the priorities to make, maybe find a less expensive project?
Uh, speaking from me, I will tell you that when it comes to materials right now, um, I mean, we went out and we bought pipe in advance in order to kind of reduce that cost, um, which we did. It seems that something comes up every time, so I, I would speak to, we can never predict the future. So, I would say, no. In my opinion, no, right now, it looks like we're running the brass. So, no, I think no matter what we're going through, the new times we're going through after COVID, I, I don't believe, uh, rebranding and reorganizing and going to a different time would be the best solution, staff would suggest. Um, I believe going forward, what we wanna do now is the best course of action. Jose, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Thank you, Superintendent McGee. Mayor Pro Tem, I think what we continue to see, not just in the water industry, but, um, in all industries across the board, is that there continues to be supply chain issues. Uh, we've seen that, we see that in this current project. Um, and so, one of the thoughts was, you know, delaying, um, may, um, yield a, uh, some savings in, in acquiring some of the material. Um, I think that Superintendent McGee has contacted, uh, some of the vendors, and we don't anticipate, um, that there's gonna be that much change in. So, so, moving forward, I don't think that, that delaying the project is gonna, is gonna... is going to generate any substantial savings.
And I know you haven't done an analysis because we're just having this conversation right now. But I mean, I suppose the offset for going forward now, notwithstanding that there might be a reduction in material costs at the project going forward, is that if these water pipes are replaced, that actually would reduce staff time spent on leaks and things like that. Presumably, this was, this project was at the top of the list because these are, you know, causing recurrent problems.
That is, that is correct.
And I'll add too, we do have the pipe now for this project and it is the size pipe we want to use for this project. So, I mean, we're ready for that. We've saved costing that too as well. So there's no predicting the future.
Great, thank you so much.
Just to follow up on that, is this an area that has had any challenges? Or is this just a normal standard in the queue replacement? Or is this, you know, this is Liliano and Arno and Santa Anita and so?
No, that's a great question. Yeah, so we prioritize whenever we do a mainline project, it's going to be the most severe areas, of course. These three, it's one phase, but it's three areas that are the most of concern right now. So it is our Liliano area, it is our Camillo area, and it is the Santa Anita area as well. All these are, they do take staff time very much, so yes.
Thank you. I guess we may as well get our bang for our buck while you're up here. So as I recall, we typically had been doing contiguous water mainline replacement. This time around, we're kind of hitting the real problem spots that aren't necessarily contiguous. We heard a lot of issues around Camillo and Arno, especially in the steeper areas that you guys were out there all the time. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, yes, sir. We will hit now, you're going to see more spot mainline replacement at this point because we have hit those areas that were continuous, if you want to call it that, yes, sir. So now we're going to do the problematic areas. So they're going to do the Camillos, yes, that's had some. It's the most leak activity, let's say that.
Thank you.
And Mayor, if I may add, we have a water system master plan that identified the 30 highest leaking water main areas in the city. Superintendent McGee and Water Department staff have done a great job to really eliminate most of those. What we found is, or what we're doing now is, that list is now more dynamic. Instead of going right down the list, we're looking at streets that weren't as high on priority become high priorities. So we're shifting around that priority list and tackling the streets that are now the most active.
Appreciate that, thank you. And kind of going back to the pre-purchase of some surplus pipe, I believe there was a relationship, which is great, that we were able to buy some surplus water main. You said that most of this is going to be the surplus? Or is it some of it? Because I see $140,000 in here. I can't remember what we authorized when we purchased that pipe. But is this all the surplus pipe or just some of it?
So this was the pipe we bought. This was bought in advance. It's about a mile of pipe that we bought in advance in order to offset going through the, you know, going through, we're using Big Ben, going through them. Yes, we're getting it at a reduced cost. So we have a relationship with PPI. We were able to store it here and that's how we got the pipe for a reduced price. Which, if you do look at it, you would see a greater price on this ask if we were going pipe through the company itself.
Okay, great, thank you. Any more questions for Superintendent McGee? Thank you.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's Day. So no more questions on item C. Item D?
I might want to add. When it comes to the city manager's contract, we were asking certain things like performance goals and criteria and how we evaluate city managers. And in the contract, there is language to address performance goals and criteria. And in practice, I think it would be a good practice to adopt ICMA's City Manager Evaluation Criteria, which is pretty standard across other cities. It's a, you can find it on the web, but a lot of cities do it. It's the International City Managers Performance Evaluation that they suggest.
You're assuming we're like other cities?
I assume that. I think it's a good practice to, for all of us to be evaluated.
Thank you. Any other questions on item D? Nope. Item E? And item F?
Just a quick thing on item F. So I know that we're going to have the mobility study coming up. I, you know, I have heard now two different accounts of some frustration with the Metro Micro and just transit overall. And I recognize this is first transit and not Metro Micro. So just as we look at transportation in this city, I think, you know, hopefully we don't keep extending this. I think we really need to dig into this deep. So maybe it's a future agenda item. So I'm in support of it, but I think that we're seeing some strains and cracks in the system.
Gotcha. Any specific questions?
Nothing on this one. It just reminded me of thinking about it in a bigger picture. So maybe I should have held that to the end of the agenda.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, okay. So no more questions on the consent calendar? I'd like to open the consent calendar up to public comment. Reminder, three minutes. Any speaker cards?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, David Gordon.
David Gordon again, and this time not as President Sierra Madre Playhouse, but as a citizen. Amazed that we passed over the City Treasurer's Report. Because I have read the City Treasurer's Report and I find it a completely astonishing document. You have, at the end of December, $33,693,757.64 sitting in investments and cash. Why? Why have you got so much money, $33 million, sitting there? Why isn't it being used to repair the sewers, to replace the water mains, to do the things that the city needs to do? It's just sitting there. Some of it's earning 2.7%, which is better than before. But I do not understand the financial structure or a financial policy that has so much money sitting there idly when it could be used to invest in the city's infrastructure. Now, of course, I have a slight skin in the game because it was explained to me in the board meeting in November that the city couldn't possibly spend $250,000 on fixing the Playhouse for various reasons. One of them being, we can't afford it. This is absurd. That's one of my comments. The second one is, we are paying the firm that provides city attorney services $12,000 a month by $4,000 a year. If you divide it by the average cost per hour of using this firm, you get about 50-hour service. If you go onto the website and find out what the average city attorney salary in Los Angeles is, it's $146,000. So I'm wondering why we are using this law firm to get 50 hours a month when you could be employing a city attorney on the staff and get $160,000 hours? So there must be a reason, but I think it's worth asking the question. I mean, Alex is an excellent person. Maybe he's being paid so much money that you couldn't afford somebody like him to be on the city. Maybe that's the reason, but I think it's worth asking the question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Any other public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Back to the council for questions. There wasn't a lot of comment, but yeah, I'll just go through each item. Item A, any question, or any comment, rather? B? I'll just make a couple of quick comments. Obviously, it's nice that the LEAF is returning a little bit more. Our cash does have to be invested within the LEAF or in U.S. Treasury Securities. And as we have seen, we're now getting, I think, 4.5% on $1 million that's sitting there, which is $45,000 in interest, which is amazing. And we do need some of that for operations. You know, some of the money that's within the treasurer's report as far as cash, a lot of it is, correct me if I'm wrong, finance or city manager, a lot of it is restricted funds and water funds. It's not all general fund. We have an ACFR, used to be called a CAFR, and that shows where our kind of lockbox of money has to be spent on certain things. Is that correct? I know that's more of a question.
That is correct. It includes all funds, including water, sewer, and special funds.
Okay, thank you. That's my comment. I'd like to commend Treasurer Amerio and finance staff on doing a good job with the cash. And yeah, I agree. I teach finance and economics. The worst asset to carry is cash. But in municipal finance, it's a little different than the private sector. So we have to keep that in mind.
Can I follow up on that? I've been on the council a while and it's nice to see these returns.
Yes.
It's very nice and pleasant surprise.
It is.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Goss. Item C. Any comments? Item D?
Do we want to ask for the amendment that Councilmember Lo made on the goals? Do we have to change the contract for that? Or do we, since it's a consent item, do we need to pull it to be able to have that conversation? Was it in there?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We just didn't have, it's in the, it's in the contract. It was just more the modality of it. Like, how do we do an evaluation? It's already there, but how do we follow through on it?
So you're not asking to change it?
I'm not asking to change it, just-
Fair enough.
Including that in that section. Not even changing the language.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just say, as a member of the subcommittee on this, Councilmember Goss and I did, you know, we were tasked with looking at comparable salaries and, you know, things of that nature. It was a lot about the benefits package and the salary. Taking into consideration, of course, the conversations that we had in closed session regarding the review. So we're happy with how it all shaped up. Okay, any more comments on item D? Item E? Comments? Okay. Mr. Gordon brings up good points, so I'd like to address them as well as I can. When we think about an individual attorney, that individual attorney is working in a silo rather than having the firm, which you can, that, within the firm, there are subspecialties and our city attorney can lean on that other attorney at basically no extra cost to use their specialty. So if we hired a specific attorney, we would probably have to hire a team of consulting attorneys in order to fill those spots, if that makes sense. So surprised the average salary of a city attorney is so low. So we're grateful that we're able to get a bargain here. Okay, and item F? Any comments on item F? Did you want to follow up on what you said earlier?
I said my piece, I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, I'm hoping, I'm in agreement with you. I'm hoping the study through UC Berkeley is going to kind of bear some fruit for not only public transportation and safety, but the whole circulation of the city. Yes, please.
Ditto on the issue of the micro. It's pretty obvious that it's not getting the job done the way we kind of hoped it would. So I hope that is part of that conversation.
Yes, I've been trying to start conversations with people east of the county or state level. I think some people weren't aware that both of our metro lines were taken away. They thought maybe just one was taken away. I think, might have to talk to our SCAG representative or the COG or somewhere higher up the line to get some answers there. Thank you, Councilmember Goss. Anything else? Okay. Moving on to discussion items.
Mr. Mayor?
Did you want to vote on that?
Oh, I'm sorry. There's no rubber stamp here?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The consent calendar carries unanimously, thank you. Now we're moving on to discussion items. Item one is consideration to amend appeal fee schedule for land use entitlements.
Director Gonzalez? Thank you, Mayor. If you recall, on January 10th of this year at your council meeting, the council inquired about whether the city council can waive an appeal fee, asked about current appeal procedures and how the appeal fee was established. And you also expressed a desire to reduce the appeal fee to lessen a financial burden to the applicant or the appellant in this case. So first of all, an appeal fee cannot be waived because it would be considered a gift of public funds to the benefit of an individual or an organization. Regarding appeal procedures, they were adopted back in 1989 in Chapter Three and specifically the section of fees and charges schedule. And that ordinance stipulates that the city manager and its department head shall review fees and service charges essentially to recover the percentage of cost to provide a specific service. And currently, the FLP for the partial cost recovery for land use entitlements is set at 75% of the original application filing fee. And since 2015, staff has processed, since I've been here, only two appeals. Elverno Heights Academy Master Plan is one of those appeals. Staff also conducted a brief survey of the neighboring cities that we typically reach out to to determine the cost basis of their appeals. The results of that study indicated that the cities of La Cunyata, Pasadena, and Claremont charge 50% of the application fees. And of two of those cities, they also charge a public noticing fee to recover staff time to prepare public notices and postage. If it is the desire of the city council to amend the policy to reduce the current appeal fee for land use entitlements, staff is suggesting to reduce the appeal fee from 75% to 50% to reduce that financial burden of the appellant. Staff has drafted Resolution 23-14, which lowers the appeal fee from that 75% to 50% basis. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Director Gonzalez. Counsel, do we have any questions? Mayor Protem?
Just one question. I understand that the individual, an individual appeal fee cannot be waived. But I had thought, when we had spoken about it previously, that the recommendation around changing the code to reduce the appeal fee could be retroactive, kind of achieving the same purpose. Is that not the case? I didn't, it wasn't clear in the staff report if that was still under consideration.
There is provision in the code that if the council desires, they can make that retroactive and seeking clarification from council.
Mayor Protem Krebs, that's correct. The issue about it being a gift to public funds is if the waiver is asked to an individual because every time we have a gift to public funds issue, we have to ask ourselves, what's the public benefit? And if the public benefit is to an individual, it likely can't constitute a public benefit that would, that wouldn't violate the constitutional provision. So to your question directly, it can be retroactive and you can have an amount that's less than what it costs staff. There can even be waivers in certain cases, but it needs to be pursuant to a policy, not a one-off decision.
And just to follow up. And the fact that we're considering this ordinance or, you know, code amendment, that could be retroactive and the fact that we're considering it in connection with a particular appellant and the fee specific to that appeal doesn't harm the analysis?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Councilmember Goss, please.
I just wanted clarification, because the 75% were at full cost recovery. Are we-
That's partial cost.
Partial, so as we drop, we're losing the capacity for cost recovery.
That's correct.
So how did you arrive at the 50%? Because of the cities that you cited as kind of a guideline?
Yes.
Can I do a follow up on that?
Yes, please.
So when we do a review of fees, just maybe to the city manager, when we do a review of fees or programs, what's the standard set of cities that we look at? Are these the standard cities that are here?
These are typically the cities that we use as a subset for a basis of our analysis. Either we contact them or do research online to find out the information desired.
Have we ever done a statewide one?
We have not.
And why is that?
I guess we could do a statewide search, but what we're trying to do is find similar cities within the San Gabriel Valley that are of similar size. Of course, the city of Sierra Madre being the smallest city. So we're trying to find something that's fairly similar. Obviously, we always throw in Pasadena, see what they're doing as a much larger city. And also putting in neighboring cities such as Arcadia.
There was a comment that we received about having a certain number of people weigh in, and that would waive the fee.
It was what, North Hollywood's model or something?
Yeah, I think it was North Hollywood's model. And it made me think of kind of the approach we have with filming permits. Is that, you know, it's actually in the reverse that way. Is that if you wanted to, you had to notify a certain percentage of folks if you wanted to do things within certain hours. Thoughts on that model? Is it pros and cons of doing it, of waiving the fee? Could we do that from a legal perspective? If you had a burden of proof, a certain percentage of neighbors or something like that?
So currently, the fee is waived under our municipal code if two council members request it to be called up. It's essentially an appeal, although we don't call it an appeal. I think we call it a call for review. So it is in our code, a system exists in our code that essentially waives the cost of an appeal, even though staff incurs that cost. So waiving costs can, is definitely a possibility. And it's for the council to determine as a policy matter whether it makes sense to have a process where members of the public can seek an appeal and those costs be waived. And whether that's a certain number of signatures I gathered, or whatever be the case, I leave that to the council's discretion.
And then, one final project. So we're doing a fee study, right? We're planning to do one. What's the impact of considering a change in the fee schedule tonight to the fee study that we will be doing sometime this fiscal year or early next fiscal year?
Thank you, Councilmember Parkers. So we anticipate a fee study in the next six months. And if that fee study is done in time for the budget process, it will be included in the new budget. And any new fees, any new recommended fees would be included in there. And that could potentially impact these fees as well.
Do you see from a policy perspective any problem of doing a change in the fee now and then potentially another change in six months? Either yourself or Director Gonzalez?
I would probably see a benefit to postpone the reduction of the appeal fee because we are doing a fee study this year.
One note, the purpose of the fee study is to make sure that we have cost recovery that's justified. Because if something exceeds, if the fee exceeds the cost, then it could be a tax. And then there has to be a vote, and then, so that's unlawful. So the purpose of the fee study is to make sure that it's no greater than the cost. But if it's less than the cost, which is what the council's contemplating, whether there's a fee study or not, there's no issue of lawfulness. It'll be lawful so long as it's less than the cost. And Director Gonzalez has demonstrated that even at the 75% level, it's below cost.
And what's the, I'm sorry, one more...
Oh, please.
What's the justification? Did you get any justification in the other cities that have, you know, those, like Monrovia that has, it's only $161, or San Marino at 905? Was there any information or any conversation about that, you know, 161 can't be cost recovery? Any logic behind that, or any justification on that?
I didn't receive any further justification on that. And obviously, there was a decision made by their councils that cost recovery was not at issue.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions?
I did like that, looking at other cities, how if it was a general, in other words, if you had a lot of the public, like 50 members of the public coming with the same appeal, that we look at waiving it because it's obviously something that we need to look more into. But by using two city council people, we kind of cover that. I wasn't quite aware of that. Also, looking at the other cities that we were comparing to, the 50% in lots of those cities still recovered 98% of the fees from what I looked at in one of the attachments. So are we looking, I also don't want to do something that's going to cost our, every citizen, or if there's one appeal in the future, let's say it's not a large group, but it's one appeal in the future, I wouldn't want us to take on a huge burden of cost, of course. So was there, and we've only had two, you said, probably, and I'm guessing it may be because it's so expensive. So if the purpose is to make this feasible for the general public to adhere to this, can we put that clause in there? That if it's, I mean, aside from just two council members, can we put that in the future too? That if there's 50 citizens that would like to appeal, then we waive it? Or is that redundant because it only takes two council members?
Yeah, it feels more like discussion than question.
Okay. Was that studied when you guys were analyzing? Was that studied?
That was not studied.
Okay.
Anything for you, Mayor Goss? Any questions?
Nope.
Or Mayor Goss? Councilmember Goss. You'll always be Mayor Goss to me. Happy Valentine's Day. Okay, so I'm thinking about these fees. And Director Gonzalez, you mentioned that there have been two since, two appeals since 2015. And you said, you mentioned Alverno. Did you mean that one of the two is this appeal that we're hearing tonight?
It is.
Okay. And in the other appeal, could you recall? Because I'm trying to, I could see reasons, it was a certain amount, as far as policy is concerned. If the applicant is then the appellant, that kind of makes sense to me. You want to build a home, and you don't like what the Planning Commission says, or you want some type of land use issue, you bring it to the council. You've got a lot of skin in the game. It's your project. This is different. The reason it came to us, this isn't, not the applicant appealing the decision, it's somebody outside. Is that, I don't know how common that is. Is that, first, is that common? And secondly, was the other appeal also the applicant?
The other appeal was the applicant, yes.
Okay.
So the other appeal was actually a staff-level decision that was appealed to the Planning Commission. In this case, if the applicant was successful in the appeal, as the applicant filing the appeal, they would be, their, the appeal fee would be returned to them. And that's kind of the structure that we're showing in your city council resolution.
Okay.
At 50%, what would have been the cost for the appeal?
So because it was an administrative design review, the city council, probably back in 2020, revised the appeal fee for residential projects, single-family residential projects, and set it at a flat fee of $500.
So if a residential project is 500, in this case, what would the fee be for this institutional project?
So the total fee plus noticing was $7,444.
So it'd be $3,700?
Mm-hmm.
Follow up on that. Our noticing fee is $775. Is that current, or?
That's the, yes, that's the current fee.
So part of that, that wouldn't have been, that wouldn't have been reduced?
That would not be reduced. We still have to pay for staff, staff time and postage.
Yeah, $4,000 or something like that, okay.
Did you see within, well, I'm assuming that within the matrix in the staff report, those are all the noticing fees that we saw. So I'm assuming that, given the universe of our sample, we were the highest as far as noticing fee, we're concerned as well?
I believe we were, yes.
Okay, thank you, Director Gonzalez. Any other questions that come up in your mind, counsel? Before we move on to public comment? Nope, okay. So let us open this up to public comment. Just a reminder, please fill out a yellow card and hand it to the city clerk, and you have three minutes to make comment on this. Madam City Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, the city received seven emailed comments regarding this topic, and they were forwarded to the city council for consideration, also uploaded to the city's website. And... And it appears that we have public comment from Deb Sheridan.
Okay. Ms. Sheridan?
Oh, thank you very much, yes. Deb Sheridan. And I understand that you don't want frivolous appeals to come before you. I would thank you, Mayor Protam Krebs, for bringing this onerous fee schedule before the council. And I didn't realize until I actually looked at the staff report. Looking at other cities' fees, I can only say, wow. Sierra Madre is totally out of line in your charges. And please take this seriously and reconsider. And yeah, your discussion was very interesting that, as you said, Monrovia charges $161. And I know one of my neighbors has also filed an appeal, and I was rather surprised at how much money he had to pay too. But thank you for considering this.
Thank you, Ms. Sheridan. Madam City Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Jason Sanders?
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Jason Sanders. I am the attorney who submitted the letter, which I believe you may have been alluding to in the discussions. So I believe that one point that may have been touched on briefly that I'd like to elaborate on is the distinction between an applicant-appellant and a non-applicant-appellant. Because as with my clients who are here today, they are non-applicant-appellants, and they have the obligation to exhaust administrative remedies before moving that challenge to Superior Court. If they are unable to clear the first hurdle of exhausting administrative remedies, that essentially terminates their ability to get into Superior Court. And that, what we are really talking about tonight is a constitutional right. And it's set forth in my letter. And I think if we follow what Los Angeles has done, and other cities have done, and making a distinction between applicant-appellants and non-applicant-appellants, you'll see that the nominal fees that are imposed by some of these cities are just for that reason. They're not to impair the appellant's right to have their hearing and exercise their right. So I think that's the most important thing that the city needs to consider, not only with my client's appeal today, but in general, in amending the fee schedule. So my letter provides a few examples of other cities who have nominal fees. We would just request that you amend, either amend the fee schedule for today's purposes so that my clients don't have to pay $3,777, okay, for an appeal that even if it's reduced by 50%, that the question still has to be asked, is that amount unconstitutional? Does it prohibit somebody from exercising their right to not only petition the government for redress, but exhaust administrative remedies? So those are two key factors that really need to be analyzed. And I think the answer is clear, that a fee that high impairs somebody's right to exercise their right. So I think that's all I have, unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. I think we can, if, I'll entertain if anybody has a question for Mr. Sanders on this issue. Do we have any from counsel? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, there are no other speaker cards.
Thank you. Let's bring this back to counsel for discussion.
Could I?
Please.
Comment? You know, way back when, when the city had no money, and it wasn't that long ago, one of the first things the council did was we engaged in fee studies with the idea to getting fees up to cost recovery. Why? Because we didn't have enough tax revenue. And that's been a consistent problem with this city for a long time. The passage of the utility tax helped a lot. And I think the management of our city improved measurably upon the arrival of Gabe England and now of city manager Enosa. So we're in a better financial position than we were. But that's just kind of some background information on why we have higher fees in many areas, I think, than other cities. We just don't have the revenue base that other cities have. I mean, Monrovia, for instance, has, you know, Walmart and all the rest. I mean, if we had one Walmart, that's a million dollars of tax revenue a year, right? So that's background. And balancing a frivolous kind of activity by citizens versus what is a reasonable amount of money to allow them to be able to petition government for redress of grievances, to me, that's the issue here. I don't think one or two a year, or one or two over five or 10 years is going to bankrupt us. It doesn't present a fiscal challenge in my mind. So I would reduce the fee substantially. I just don't want to give an incentive to people to do frivolous lawsuits because people do these things. And that is, we could be in an upside-down position where we have expensive staff services being utilized, you know, like that, without any real reason. So I'm interested to hear what my colleagues have to say on this. But I would be, I would favor moving the fee substantially down below 50%. I don't know what the magic number would be. I'm not comfortable with nominal, but I feel like something, something quite a bit less than 50%, I think is appropriate.
Thank you, Councilmember Goss. Mayor Protam, yes, please.
Yeah, no, I am having the same, weighing the two, the same two concerns in my mind. And there were two aspects of Mr. Sanders' letter that intrigued me. One is, I do think that particularly given the mechanism that we have that returns the appeal fee to applicant-appellants if their appeal is successful, I think the recommendation of Councilmember Goss in meaningfully reducing the fee, I would be more in favor of that in the instance of a non-appellant applicant. I also don't think we want to encourage disgruntled applicants who are just, you know, upset with being told no, to appeal, just for the sake of appealing. So I do like, I do like the idea of meaningfully reducing the fee solely for non-applicant-appellants. I also liked, just in terms of weighing against the, you know, frivolous or, you know, weighing against that aspect, the idea of, you know, of demonstrating support. So that I know we got a number of public comments from neighbors of the Stevens saying that, you know, they had considered appealing, but it was, you know, too pricey for them, and, but they fully supported, and they were so appreciative of the Stevens for taking this on for the neighborhood. And those, to me, those are the kinds of things that we would definitely want to encourage, particularly where there's, you know, support across an area or, you know, among a number of our citizens. So I'd also like to hear folks' thoughts about, you know, requiring, especially if we're going to reduce it to a pretty low amount that really doesn't have any bearing or any relationship with cost recovery, to perhaps having some requirement of, you know, demonstrating support beyond just the individual, non-applicant-appellant.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Councilmember Lo?
That was very similar to what I was thinking as well. I do think there should be a distinction between the applicant versus the non-applicant because the purpose is so different, and as well as the pocketbook. It is part of the process for an applicant to appeal and then, you know, adjust and then reapply or appeal the decision versus our citizens and our neighbors having a say in what decisions we make. And I agree that if there's a certain amount of number of neighbors that it's enough that it's, this is our public, and we need to listen to them and be able to adjust those decisions, that it shouldn't be based on the fact that you cannot afford it. But at the same time, it's... But at the same time, it should be non-frivolous that you have, you know, so many applicants and so many people appealing that it burdens our staff. So I agree that it should, we should, first of all, designate between applicant and non-applicant fees and then also reduce the fee for the non-applicants.
Thank you.
I agree with Councilmember Lowe and Councilmember Krebs. I, before going too much further though, I just want to clarify, so is this unconstitutional, City Attorney, Garagosian?
Honestly, Councilmember, I haven't, I received Mr. Sanders' letter today, but I haven't had an opportunity to look into that issue. But he is right to point out that above a certain threshold, there is a constitutional issue that arises and I just don't know what that threshold is at this point.
Got it. Yeah, so I'll even take a step further from what my colleague said is that I'd be willing to posit a 50% cost for the appellant and a 25% for a non-appellant for just to start a discussion and to see what the people think of that and see if that is something that other people think is reasonable.
To clarify, you said 50% for an applicant?
For the applicant.
25% for a non?
Yes, yes.
Let me make sure.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, yeah. Councilmember Goss, thank you for that background regarding the tax revenue and looking at ways to bolster our revenue. Historically, I agree with you and, but yeah, like I said, I don't think it contemplated a non-applicant appellant when we were doing that. And I read Mr. Sanders' letter quickly because it was today. And I know that I was quoted there and there was, you know, there's public, public can use my emails and there was my email attached to there was a different resident that pleaded their case as far as they couldn't afford to do this. And, you know, I had a heart for him and I said within my email exactly what's being said here today. We do not, it needs to be high enough to discourage frivolity and people wanting to just throw gum into the gears, but it shouldn't be high enough, too high, that we would step on people's democratic and constitutional rights. So I'm in favor of something kind of in between. You know, I get it and I don't know where the basis on the percentage of the fee of the permits kind of lays relative to cost recovery. I was even, I was even thinking about a flat fee. I know Councilmember Goss wants to do a percentage. I'm open to that as well.
Oh, I'm cool for a flat fee.
And I was looking at, within the staff report, I'm flipping pages here.
Here.
You know, South Pasadena is 1,121 and I don't know where that number comes from, but, you know, a number like $1,000 feels to me that it's enough for somebody to really have a serious gripe, but not so much that somebody couldn't fundraise amongst their fellow residents to get to that level. We probably do want to keep the noticing fee separate, probably not $775, probably something more in line with our peers. I know there aren't a lot of observations of data here, but I'm open to either.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
San Marino and South Pasadena are the closest to us, I think, in terms of peers. So I like your idea of 1,000. I don't see why we'd be any more than, you know, for the noticing fee, what San Marino is charging, something like $70 or $75.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Can I ask a question about the noticing fee?
Certainly.
I don't even think the fee that we quote covers, what is the, what is the number of mailings that are required? Because postage is quite expensive and I was surprised that $700 would cover mailing, but perhaps it's not to a great number of people?
Well, it's just labor too.
Typically, it's a 300-foot radius. Could be, say, properties around one carter would be 1,000-foot radius. Hillside management zone, 500-foot radius.
And just roughly speaking, I know that would differ depending on what area you're talking about, but roughly speaking, is that dozens, hundreds, like in terms of actual mailing addresses?
Yes, for Alverno, I believe it was just under 200 mailings.
Okay. So we're looking to recover at least the actual out-of-pocket costs?
That makes sense, yeah. Yeah, and so, you know, we talked about, Councilmember Lowe brought up, I think it was North Hollywood's model that was brought up in Mr. Sanders' letter. I don't know that a nominal amount of residents, but maybe something similar to our filming code that has a percentage of individuals around a project because, well, they're the people that live around it. I don't know if that's appropriate here with land use, maybe it is, maybe it is citywide. I don't know how we want to tackle that, if we're going to even entertain that.
I mean, it gets to some level, it's a little bit different, you know, if you've got a residential, it's four, maybe six around you. If you've got an institutional, of course, then you're talking some more. So, you know, do we need to double differentiate between the applicant and the non-applicant and between institutional and residential? Do we need to get that complicated or not?
I feel like the residential fees are different, right? That there's an actual, one of the reasons why this was so expensive is because it was an institutional-related process, right?
Actually, it is not. So whether this is a design review permit, in this case it was a conditional use permit, or a variance, all three of those application fees are the same.
Mayor Protem, the distinction you're thinking about is appeals of administrative design review permits. So if it goes to Director Gonzalez first and then it's appealed, it's a $500 fee for the appeal. But if it goes straight to the planning commission because it's not administrative, then whatever goes to planning commissions are covered at the 75% rate for appeals.
And just to clarify, the $500 appeal fee for administrative design review only?
I don't think we're close to the decision here, so I'd like some more discussion.
I mean, personally-
Or consensus at least.
Personally, I'm not interested in lowering the appeal fee for applicant appeals because, you know, there already is a mechanism for them to recover that if their appeal is successful. You know, and so if their appeal is not successful, we've now done the same exercise twice and I'd like to avoid encouraging that to happen. So that's just my opinion. I think we should, I personally would just like to be talking about non-applicant appellant fees because that, to me, is, you know, the citizens exercising their right, you know, to counter, to find, you know, to get government, redress from government decisions. I recognize that applicants also have that, but it's, they're different and they're in a different position. So that's my, and I think frankly, if we're going to reduce it to a, not nominal, but not crazy number, I think maybe we, despite what I said earlier, maybe don't go into the complexity of requiring, you know, additional support. You know, frankly, with a number like 1,000, if you had other neighbors that were in support, instead of having them sign a piece of paper, you could instead ask them to maybe kick in a little bit of the fee. And so that would kind of be going on in the background anyway and to me, it would just simplify the city's process and we wouldn't have to go through the complication of deciding on a number and verifying and providing them a percentage or, you know, whatever it might be. I think it might just be more straightforward if we just came up with a fee that felt right.
Thank you. I think City Attorney had a comment on Mayor Protem's comment.
Right, so one correction, Mayor Protem. That cost recovery that the applicant can realize only happens under our code for appeals of administrative decisions. So currently, there is no cost recovery for an applicant of a decision of the planning commission. Only of a decision, an appeal of the director.
And I want to make sure we have definitions clear here. When you say cost recovery, we're not talking about staff cost recovery, but rather appellants-
Cost, yes.
Cost, yes, okay.
Okay, thank you for that.
I was sorry, just really quick adding to that one part. The, so you would affirm the 75%? I would, I would agree that we separate between the applicant appeal fee as a percentage, but I think that we should be in somewhat align with the other cities of 50% because what if the, what if it is a resident in a home and they've just, honestly, they just spent so much money on permits and everything else and now they would like to appeal that decision and I think 50% would be more fair and sounds like we wouldn't be losing that much of a percentage of cost recovery. But I wouldn't want to be this exorbitant 75% that we're the only city that's 75% amongst all the other cities, even big cities in our area.
So let's, if we could ask Director Gonzalez regarding fees, I don't have fee schedules in front of us, but thinking about permits and fees for a conditional use permit versus permits and fees regarding some type of variance on a property for land use entitlement, is, are they vastly different as far as nominal cost is concerned?
So our fees are consistent across the board for various reviews if we compare it to other cities. I know City of Pasadena has higher fees than we do. Other, many other cities would be probably $10,000 application fees. So we are not the highest and we are not the lowest.
So would that be an application fee for like, let's say, if somebody building something or somebody asking for a conditional use permit regarding a master plan?
No, that would be for a residential property, possibly in addition.
Okay, well.
So I agree with Councilmember Lowe. I think 75 for an owner, I do think that's high. It puts us out of the realm of the others. So I'm a little bit different than Mayor Protem on that one. So I think if we're going to open this up, let's address that 75 fee as well. I do agree with Mayor Protem in that if we're going to do this, you know, and lower the cost substantially, that the, you know, number of people around, I think it does get more complicated. So if we lower it low enough, then I think that that, I would be in agreement with that.
I'm with you there. Councilmember Goss?
Well, I'd like to propose that we create a fee for non-applicants, $1,000, with a $75 noticing fee and reduce the fee for applicants from 75 to 50%.
How are we feeling about that? I think that's-
Run that up the flagpole and see if anybody salutes it.
I think that's reasonable and if we get to a motion, I know part of this discussion is talking retroactively. Do we need to include any language on the motion regarding?
Can we, before we get to that point, just because I wanted to follow up specifically?
Please, please.
We know that there have only been two appeals and that, and that's, you said, that included both applicants and non-applicants. So making this distinction that we're making, it doesn't change the analysis in terms of the budgetary impact, right? It's not like if we were to lower from 75 to 50 the applicant appeal fee, that that somehow would have a more, would be more impactful on the budget because it's the same, basically it's the same number of appeals.
That's fair to say, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm in support of Councilmember Goss's proposal of 50, 1,000, and 75.
Would the $75-
Public noticing fee.
Public noticing fee be both for-
That's a good question.
Applicant appellants and non-applicant appellants? Is that, do we want to standardize that?
I don't care about the fee, but I do think it needs to include cost recovery. Like, $75 will not pay for the postage.
It feels very low, yeah.
Well, it won't pay for postage.
I like, I like, Laconyada says 50% of original processing fee plus direct notice cost. So that's for the applicant. Non-applicant would be $1,000 plus $75 noticing fee. Or we could say that language for both, plus direct notice cost.
So the noticing fee, so I understand for an applicant, the noticing fee, you've got to go out to all of the households. If you've got someone who is appealing it, does the same notice have to go out to all the households?
It does.
Okay.
And Councilmember Parker's, to your point, sometimes the 200-foot radius notice or 300-foot radius notice only goes out to 10 homes. Alverno is unique because of the size of the property, it went out to something like 200 homes. So whereas $75 wouldn't cover the postage for Alverno, it would cover the postage for a small residential project in the corner of the city, for example.
Yeah, I would, I would say that a typical radius for surrounding residential property, depends on the size of the lot, would be, you know, typically maybe 60 other residences.
So could we add, instead of a set amount, we say plus direct notice cost?
Yeah, I'd be fine with that because postage is going up daily.
Yeah, that's true. What's it going to be in the future?
Are we looking, yeah, good point. Are we looking just applicant appellants or are we looking at also?
I would not create a distinction here.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
So what would a likely fee be for some, a project the size of this one? We're talking about a fee back up in the-
Maybe, my guess would be 1,750 is what my math says because it was 750 noticing, $1,000 for a non-applicant versus the 7444.
750, what's the 750?
The 750, it was our original noticing fee. It wasn't tied to the direct cost.
Oh, right. Oh, I'm sorry, that's right.
If we-
Like, 40 cent postage for 200 people is $80. I mean, we're not talking hundreds and hundreds of dollars. I mean, I know sending out something to the entire city could be thousands of dollars, but that is not going to be the case here.
You have labor too.
But right, but we, I think we're talking about direct costs though, right?
Yeah.
Director Gonzalez, do-
Direct notice cost.
Do we have, do we have a mechanism to capture? I know for labor, obviously, we do, but to capture direct costs for like cardstock and the postage and those things?
I think I would only apply it to postage.
Thank you. Okay, that seems reasonable.
And what's the logic for just applying it to postage, Director Gonzalez? I mean, you've got cardstock, you've got double-sided, that's, that can be, you know, a buck or two a flyer.
The real cost is in staff time preparing the notices, printing the notices, dividing them. Actually, for the Alverno appeal, it took me about two and a half hours.
What took you two and a half hours?
Of my time to prepare the notice, print them batch by batch, separate them, and run them through the postage machine.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. Feel like we're getting closer.
So the only thing in contention is the noticing fee for the applicant, right? Or were we cool with 75 for the non-applicant?
I think we said 50% for the, I think he's talking dollars, right?
I was just flat fee. I was just talking about-
We're talking about the noticing fee portion.
Yeah, $75.
I would say direct notice cost for both.
As, but, so to be determined by the administration.
Direct cost?
Direct cost.
That seems reasonable.
When we're saying direct cost, what do we, we don't mean out-of-pocket, we're including labor?
Don't we need a number or a percentage so the public knows what they're going to have to pay?
No, 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 so they're, they pay 50% of the original processing fee. That would be, that would be if they were the applicant, plus the direct cost of the mailer. So they're paying 50% only of their, of their cost.
They would be given the cost by, after the cost has been determined.
Yeah, I see your point here.
I mean, I think they should know what they're paying for upfront, rather than being told, yes.
I think the clarity is important. What was your math again, Mayor Protem?
Oh, for 200 people, it was $80, just in postage. Today's postage. I think it's 40 cents, right?
I don't know.
Might have gone up. I think it might be 42, actually.
It's more. Oh, so that'd be like 110, 100 and something. Really? First-class postage?
Let's see. If we, if we set it at a nominal fee such as $150, Attorney Garagosian, would that, if we're looking at the constitutionality or as far as recovery, cost recovery, for that, if since it's kind of itemed out and we, on some projects are above our direct cost for that particular item, is that okay? As long as the whole universe of the appeal is less than our cost recovery?
I mean, if it's a fixed cost of $150, that, it wouldn't, it would be less than the cost of-
Not in your 20-home example?
Even in the 20-home because with, if you include labor, it's more.
Labor, it's way over there.
So it wouldn't- So it wouldn't, at at one fifty, it wouldn't be a concern.
Mr. Mayor, I just looked it up, it's sixty-three cents for postage per letter.
Buy those forever stamps now. Okay.
Well, a hundred and fifty's a nice round number, and it is way below cost recovery, so we're.
At a pace of the postage.
Right, and we're subsidizing our citizenry here, giving them a better opportunity.
And then when they do a fee survey again, they can assess whether that changes with postage in the future.
Right.
Okay. Feel like we're even closer. Mayor Prote- or uh, Councilmember Goss, are you ready for a for a motion here or?
Yeah, sure, I'll 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 move for a a a fee of one thousand dollars for non-applicants with a hundred and fifty-dollar fee, noticing fee. And we want to do a fifty percent charge for applicants with a hundred and fifty-dollar noticing fee. Right?
I'd second that.
Okay.
Any friendly amendments or we feel we feel comfortable with that? Okay, we have a motion and a second, although?
Oh, oh, hold on.
Yes, please.
Sorry, discussion item, do we want to revisit the topic that you started to bring up that I?
Oh, regarding specifically the Stevens?
Right, well, specifically the effective date.
Oh, okay.
So I mean, like, for example, the the resolution that was attached, the staff report talked about it becoming effective upon adoption, which I think was not quite what we were thinking anyway. Um so I guess the question is, do we make it for the entirety of the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, is that?
Sure. I'll modify my motion to that effect.
And that would cover the filing at issue?
Uh, well, I, the filing, as I look at it now, it was, I believe it was filed on the December fourteenth of December, so uh it should probably be retroactive as to going back to December fourteenth.
Well, wouldn't the fiscal, wouldn't, wouldn't the fiscal, current fiscal year be back to June?
June, two thousand twenty-two.
And there's no, there are no other?
I feel like that's a nice round.
That makes sense.
That's gonna make sense. So I'll modify my motion in that respect. We'll need another second.
Second, is there a second?
Go ahead.
Councilmember Lowe, thank you. All right. Any other amendments or comments before we go to a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed, carries unanimously. Thank you, that was, that was good work. Okay, moving on to discussion item number two. Consideration of Amendment to Solid Waste Agreement with Athens Services, and I believe we have Management Analyst Carlson.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Discussion item two on your agenda tonight is a consideration of an amendment to the city's solid waste agreement with Athens Service. In late twenty-twenty-one, the city council adopted ordinance one four four seven to stay in compliance with state regulations regarding the recycling of organic material. City staff in a solid waste subcommittee, including members of Mayor Protem Krebs and Councilmember Parkhurst, um began discussions uh with representatives of Athens following the adoption of the ordinance. Uh, we are now ready to present the results of these discussions. Um Athens Services representatives are here, Christian Warner and Ed Chen, and they will be providing a uh a presentation on what is exactly required of us for SB thirteen eighty-three and how is it included in our proposed amendment, how will they take care of it? I will then follow with a summary of the negotiations between the city and Athens Services, including the benefits to each party and how the rates will be adjusted. Finally, I will also provide a summary of the process going forward. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and and introduce uh Mr. Warner, who will provide um a presentation on what we're doing with thirteen eighty-three.
Welcome, Mr. Warner.
Good evening. Mayor Garcia and City Council, thank you so much uh for allowing me to be here tonight to speak with you. My name is Christian Warner, I'm a Senior Vice President at Athens Services. And tonight, I'd like to just share a little bit about Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three, which is really, I believe, the main reason we've been discussing and talking about all this. Um so I have a a brief presentation to to share with you and um hopefully, all those who are watching, this is, parts of this presentation we've given before, we've given this in many different cities, and part of Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three is ongoing education. And so this is another good opportunity that we have tonight to talk about this. So Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three, um actually, before I discuss that, I just want to let you know what you're looking at is a picture of American Organics. This is our company's organic facility up in Victorville, and what you're looking at is piles of beautiful certified compost, which we take all of the organics from our cities, we take it to our facility, and in about a matter of matter of thirty days, it turns into this certified compost. Our facility is a certified facility because we are able to produce a certified material that then is used by specific farmers. And they use that certified organics to produce fruits and vegetables that they're able to then go to the market and sell as organic fruits and vegetables. And so it takes a special um material, and that's something that we produce at our facility. There we go. So we're here tonight after a series of a few different um laws and legislative mandates that have come from the state of California. I'm not gonna go through each one here, but we've come to the far right to Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three. This is unfortunately an unfunded state mandate, which means the costs of this law are going to be borne by all of the citizens and businesses throughout the state of California in every single city, you and I and everyone who lives here. Um but Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three essentially requires everybody to separate their organic material from their trash. Um it requires some food recovery requirements that I'm gonna go into, and um this goes down to every single resident, multifamily establishment, every commercial business um in this state, pretty much everyone. So thirteen eighty-three, in an effort to reduce organics in landfills, which is a source of methane entering into the atmosphere, the state of California has developed these regulations to reduce the disposal of organics by fifty percent by two thousand twenty and and then increased up to by seventy-five percent by two thousand twenty-five. And this is to reduce it by fifty percent as compared to two thousand fourteen levels in all of the California landfills. So as a state, we have that mandate to reduce all of the organics out of our landfill and to take it somewhere else. And as I showed you in that very first slide, to a place like what we have, which is our composting facility. Um there are other requirements that every jurisdiction must comply with that I'll touch on a little bit here. Um but what does this mean? Again, this means that every account is going to be affected and that we all have a duty, a job to separate organics. So what are organics? This is, these are some examples of of what what are organics. Organics are food scraps, so fruit, fruits and vegetables, dairy items, meat, bones, poultry, seafood, beans, rice, flowers, herbs, coffee grounds, the filters. Um food scraps in general are considered organic material. Yard trimmings that we're all used to putting in our green barrels, like grass clippings, weeds, leaves and branches, flowers, lumber, clean scrap wood, these are also considered organics. And finally, something that a lot of people don't understand or excuse me, realize and know yet is food-soiled paper products are also considered organic material. Things like food-stained paper, napkins and paper, kitchen towels, paper egg cartons and pizza boxes that have all that grease and cheese on it, um paper packaging, again, any of this fiber-based paper that is food-soiled or food-stained is now considered organic material. All of these things that you see on this slide should now be put into the green barrel, all mixed together. And so the biggest change that we are all gonna be seeing is when we would normally put our food scraps and our food-soiled paper into another barrel, we're now being asked to put it into the green barrel. The reason why is because the black, the contents of our black barrels go to the landfill. And so we want to get that stuff out of the black barrel so that it doesn't go to the landfill, put it into the green barrel so that it can go to American Organics to turn into compost. That's the essence of Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three. Now, there are some other items that we have to comply with. As James uh mentioned, the city already put into effect its city ordinance at the end of two thousand twenty-one, which is something that every city has to do. And then there's other, uh, some other compliance requirements. There are route audits that have to be done, waste characterizations, ongoing outreach and education, data and reporting to the state, which is CalRecycle, procurement's requirements, and then also food recovery support. At Athens, we've been preparing for Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three for years. We've been preparing our infrastructure, preparing our operations, our administrative staff back at our office, we've been putting people in place so that we can help our cities, so that we can provide you thirteen eighty-three programs so that you can be compliant with this new state law. Um and we've already been doing this in many of the surrounding cities here in the San Gabriel Valley area. Um as this is a, basically a mandate that's been put into place, we've been doing this in other cities, it's been working great, very successful. We've been seeing um increases in our organic recovery, which is really what we want. And all of the other programs that we've been providing are something that we do for the city so that the cities can essentially say, Athens, you've got this, and the city doesn't have to worry about it. So what does this mean and what does this look like to a resident? A single-family resident here in Sierra Madre has three barrels. That's gonna stay the same. As I explained earlier, we're all gonna try and do a better job of separating what the true organics is and putting it taking it out of the black barrel and putting it in the green barrel before you put it, take it out to the curb. For a multifamily establishment, multifamily establishments with five or less units have the option to subscribe subscribe to the three-barrel system, and so they would do the same thing. If that multifamily complex, maybe with six or more units, has a bin for all of their mixed waste, they will now need to have a separate green barrel to separate their organics. And then for commercial, very similar to multifamily, most of our commercial establishments have bins, and they will need to also have a green barrel to put in their organics. Some of the other requirements that we have to do per state law is something we call route audits. This is literally where we will go around, we have to lift up the lid and look at the contents of all the barrels before it gets dumped by our trucks. We look in the black barrel to see if there's any organics in there that should be in the green. We look in the green barrel to see if there's any trash in there that should be in the black. If we see any contamination, we take pictures, we talk with the resident or we talk with the commercial business, we go over the education and we work with them so that that behavior changes. And so these route audits have to occur every year. We have a a program in place at our company where we are visiting all of the cities, kind of on a big circle loop, so that by the time we get to Sierra Madre, we come back in a year, so on and so forth. Um so that's what ro- route audits are. Another care um requirement is waste characterization. So this is something we do at our facilities where we have to take samples, like two-hundred-pound samples of the contents of a larger truck, and then do waste characterizations. Again, to look for contamination on a larger scale. So maybe we see something in a neighborhood or on a certain day because certain um loads will have too much contamination. And these are just some pictures of a a real waste characterization that's going on, where we actually separate out the contents of of that entire um sample to see what's in it. Another requirement that we have is outreach and education, and this is something, again, that is ongoing. And this is a crucial step to help customer behavior, and this is not just gonna happen overnight. This is gonna take months to years to really get everyone to to get on board with this, to learn about it and to know that this is something that's happening in the state of California. But we were, we track, we record, we manage, and we store all of the data gathered by all of our outreach, by all of our efforts, and then we work with the city to get that information back to CalRecycle. We do this through in-person efforts, presentations, waste assessments, digital efforts with videos that are on our website and social media, as well as printing, where we send out ongoing newsletters to all the customers to help them with all this education that they that they need to be seeing. Now, the data and reporting requirement is something that's pretty neat here at Athens. We have developed a a dashboard that each city will have so that your city's staff can log on, look at your city's information pertaining to Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three, all of the data we've been collecting, all of the route audits, the pictures, the tonnages we've been diverting, everything. Your city's staff will have access to that at any time. And as you can see on this slide, listed are all the different things that we are checking and reporting and tracking um for each city. Procurement support. Procurement, this is a one that the state has asked every city to do, to actually procure recycled organic products on an annual basis. And this is done by either using compost or mulch or renewable natural gas. This is something where we at Athens are able to provide tremendous support because of the amount of renewable natural gas that we already use in our vehicles that are here in Sierra Madre and that are transporting from a recycle, from our recycle plants to landfills. It's all renewable natural gas. And so your city is able to take credit for the renewable natural gas that's being used here in your city through our trucks. This is also um part of the requirement where we are able to return um a lot of the compost from our American Organic facility. So your residents and commercial businesses will be throwing their organics away. We'll take it away, take it to American Organics, turn it into compost, and bring it right back to your city to be used in everybody's gardens, on their lawns. That's something that is part of these um, this new amendment that we have proposed for you tonight is, is to have two annual compost events, giveaways for your city specifically, where residents can come and fill up and get as much um compost as they can. Finally, one of the last requirements is something that we call food recovery. Certain commercial businesses that have a lot of food and edible food at that are being required to um get rid of so that it can be used, this edible can, edible food can be used by another entity. And the state has broken that down into tier-one businesses, which is on your left, and tier-two businesses on the right. So this is a requirement where you can have place um establishments like food distributors or wholesale food vendors, um grocery stores, for example, that are now being asked to specifically make sure that they are getting um, finding another entity to give at least twenty percent of their edible food, so that other food banks and churches who accept donations, many entities can then use this edible food. And so that is a part of this um Senate bill that we are also helping and providing support with. With that, I um opened it up to any questions, and uh again, we're happy to be here. I know that um James will be talking more about the meetings that we've been having and the proposed amendment that we have in place, and um myself and Ed, we are here tonight to uh to ha- to be part of that discussion and answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, yes, thank you, thank you very much, Christian. Um, moving on from there, I want to talk a little bit about the on the negotiations that occurred in the past year. Um ultimately, I want to give you a list of the benefits to the city and Athens and then explain the 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 rate increase structure. Um the negotiated benefits, um obviously, I was I was really happy that um Christian was able to give you all of the details and all of the work that they're gonna have to do for the SB thirteen eighty-three compliance programs. Um the other thing that is unique to Sierra Madre, throughout the state, Athens will be providing bear-resistant organic barrel to all residential customers. And that was the key at the very beginning of our discussions. If we're gonna segregate all of the organics, that's the smelly stuff. So we needed to be a little bit creative. We had to go up to the state regulator, CalRecycle, explain our position on this, and so we were able to negotiate to get the new bear-resistant organic can to every residential account. Um Athens is going to modify from bimonthly to monthly. We just think that that's a a little bit more um the trend right now. When we switched our water department from monthly to bimonthly, we got a lot of good response, so we wanted to um go with that. Athens will be providing an annual three, thirty thousand dollars to the. Athens will be providing an annual three, thirty thousand dollars to the city's environment fund. That can go for extra dumpsters for a Bailey Canyon cleanup. It can go for extra street sweeping as needed after events, you know, and things like that. We do have a little flexibility that we can comply with our trash requirements. And in my mind, a little bit of our trash TMDL or NPDS kind of requirements could be fed in with this type of fund. I could cut a few extra trees, too, if I have money left over at the end, or of course, plant a bunch. Athens will provide a one-time payment of two hundred thousand dollars upon execution of the amendment. Athens will provide two annual compost giveaway events, and actually, today, we scheduled the first one, which will be Saturday, April eighth. It's just in time for spring. Athens, this is brand-new. Athens will provide an annual household hazardous weight, waste, and e-waste drop-off event. In the past, we had hosted one of the county events in our Mariposa parking lot, and we, we kind of lost our, our deal with the county. They, they're doing one at the Santa Anita Race Track on that same weekend, so we were sending all of our residents down there for the last couple of years. Athens is going to step in and do one of these for us in town now. Athens will provide a forty-yard recycled roll-off at Sierra Vista Park. That is for all of your recycles, not the organic recycles, the cardboard at Christmas time that you see, or any other thing that just won't fit into your blue bin. We, we will have that forty-yard recycled little bin down back at the, by the cemetery and the tennis courts and stuff like that, right there. Athens will continue to pay our city's annual LAURA dues. That is a JPA that we belong to. It's actually how we do our reporting to the state is with the JPA. It's also a lot of information sharing. Athens will provide enhanced recycling information to customers on a quarterly basis. I get a lot of questions in my office about, what is the state of plastics recycling? Can I recycle number two, three, or four? What's tinfoil worth anymore? And it's so dynamic with a lot of things happening, that they are going to give us the quarterly report on how the recycling markets are looking. Athens will look to, will work with the city to clean up and clarify certain sections. There is some definitions of what a unit is. There's a definition of what an overfilled bin is. Certain things like that, that they have agreed to go ahead and, and will get into those details. Athens will phase in the extraordinary rate adjustment over two years. So the extraordinary rate adjustment is above and beyond what we've always done on our annual things to implement all of these items, specifically SB thirteen eighty-three, and also that the beer cans are a bit expensive. Two years will be added to the Evergreen contract. We will modify the annual rate adjustment formula to use garbage and trash-specific CPI as opposed to the generic CPI we've done for the, for the history of our contract. We feel that that's a bit more precise to make a calculation, as it takes in the specific challenges of that industry. We will include plus one percent to the annual rate adjustment for seven years. And then finally, Athens has agreed to pay for the Proposition Two eighteen process. I wanted to show what a typical rate increase will look like for this first year. Again, the extraordinary rate increase, I'm sorry, that's where we're paying for these programs. We're paying them over two years. It's nine percent a year for year one and two for residential, eleven point five year one and two for commercial. This is what it will look like this year. An average monthly, remember going to monthly now, will go from thirty-eight sixty-three to forty-two eleven for our residential customers, two oh nine seventy-six to two thirty-three eighty-eight for our multifamily, two oh eight eighty-four to two thirty-two eighty-six for our commercial. Annually, and this is the, the way it's been historically in our contract, is every year, they get to, we, we would administratively award them an increase solely based on CPI and tipping fees, what they have to pay at the landfill or the destination to deposit the material from Sierra Madre. We are changing it to a trash-specific CPI, but that will continue through the length of our contract. And then part of the negotiations was to add one percent to that annual increase for seven years. The process, and I had some questions. The city, we're asking the city council to approve the proposed amendment and direct staff to initiate the Prop Two eighteen process. Formal approval to, will be presented to the city council based on the results of the Prop Two eighteen process. So you don't have the actual draft of the full amendment. We need to get your sign in. What I was saying is you can, in, in concept, you can approve it, so we have material and information to go out to our voters with Prop Two eighteen. If it is passed by the voters, you will be given the full draft with all of the amendments that we talked about. We will take the time to make sure that the language accurately reflects all of the, the items that we have agreed upon, and we'll take the time to make sure we do that with our city attorney, and possibly our, our subcommittee again, for the forty-five-day Prop Two eighteen process. And with that, that's the conclusion of our presentation. The Athens representatives and myself are happy to answer your questions.
Fantastic report. Thank you. Counsel, questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
It's not a question. I just wanted to highlight, because you actually skipped one of the benefits, which actually came up this week on social media. But, you know, part of what we discussed was that Athens would work with the city on solutions to illegal dumping. And that actually was very timely this week, because there's been reports of that, that very thing occurring in the canyon. So I just wanted to highlight that, because I think that's going to be important for folks to
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
work together so we can solve that problem.
While you're up here, can you explain what new beer cans means for our residents?
Yeah, they're all going to be new. If you have one already, you're getting a new one. Some of the beer cans that are out there are of, are older style. I have one with the very small metal clips. So for the past four years, we've had to pay a little extra money, so that the driver comes out, opens it, and then empties it out. The technology has improved over the last maybe two years or so, where they have a bearing system, where the, the trash will reach a certain angle, and it will unlock, and alleviating the need for the drivers to go out and unlock them. And I do like to call them bear-resistant cans. Athens will tell you they're bear-proof, and I have never seen a bear get in one, but I like to keep it at bear-resistant.
And these are the green barrels, not the, the black ones? So currently, people just have the black barrels that are bear-resistant?
Right.
And, and these are the, they'd be switching to green?
Right, yeah. The black barrels, I like to call inert trash now, and so organics and recycling would go the other way.
Kind of on that line, as far as our multi-unit residents, let's say they have a three-cubic yard bin. We saw in the picture, there's going to be one green can. Is it going to, because before, actually, the yard waste could go in there and everything. Now, yard waste needs to go in the green can and, and the organics. I guess they're all organics, but now the food waste, some food scraps. Is it going to be one can, or is it going to be contingent on the amount of residents on that parcel?
Fortunately, we are a smaller town, so we can take a lot of those cases one by one. We really will. You mentioned that we're going to have the food waste and the grass clippings in the same one, and there will be public outreach to let people know that it, it really benefits to put green clippings, grass clippings, yard clippings and stuff, on top of the organic waste, because it will really cut down on the smell. That's an example of some of the public outreach that we're going to be doing. But for the multifamily, it is going to be a bit case by case. Even with commercial and just the space for receptacles in some of our downtown businesses, we are going to have to work, you know, with them independently.
Do any of our businesses meet the threshold of a stage-one or stage-two food generator?
We, we will go back and reassert. Wards may be a producer. Other than that, the Kensington and the only place in town are the highest volume for restaurants. And then I, I believe Taylor's is on the cusp as far as volume, if they fall one, two, or they don't fall.
Thank you.
Sierra Madre Elementary School and Sierra Madre Middle School?
They are served by Pasadena District, and they have a different waste hauler. So we, that's a good point, though. We might have to look at Gooden and Bethany and St. Rita's and such.
But that's, no one's a tier-two, right?
I can't imagine the definition of the wards.
Local education agencies with onsite food facility, that's a tier-two.
But isn't, isn't there a size on it? That was where I saw, or was it?
It's in the Athens.
For local education, it's not a size. For restaurants, it says five thousand square feet larger, or seating more than two hundred and fifty. Otherwise, for local education agencies with an onsite food facility.
I don't care. I think our non-PUSD schools have onsite food facilities.
Fortunately, we can rely on our, our friends at Athens to make those determinations and report accordingly.
Thank you.
So would the cost, if, let's say someone needed another green bin, like restaurants or apartments, and the picture showed the bin with the bear, the green barrel, is that a cost to the resident?
Yeah, and, and that's, I didn't give you the full fee schedule. It's actually two pages long for every tiny little service you could possibly ever want. And it's always been that way in our contract. If you, you get a green, a black, a blue, and a green, you get an extra green and extra blue, up to one or two for free, if you need even more, if you have a really big yard. You do pay a relatively small amount for that extra can in whatever category you're at. That will follow with the organics recycling. If an extra one is needed, there will be a nominal extra price for that. Athens, you know, it's, it's something we're going to have to work out, and fortunately, we are small enough to do it case by case.
Okay, because I know many people do fill up their green cans on a weekly basis, and this would just be adding to that. So looking at this, I'm looking at, you know, if we are being charged for an extra green can for most residents, then that's going to be a pretty nominal fee, I mean, a pretty substantial fee.
Yeah, you want to get into that? I'm, I'm thinking if an, an extra green can is needed for yard tripping,
Much larger than like the
It might not need to be the organics bear one. It could be long.
Yeah, yeah. If, if a citizen needs more than what they're already allowed to get by way of the green barrel, and they need an extra organic barrel, it's four dollars and sixty-eight cents a month, for an extra one.
And that's after how many? Two?
After two. I believe it's two. And most likely, residents will not need an additional green barrel than what they're already used to. If you think about the amount of food waste that you might have in your home, it's probably not going to justify a, a, another barrel. You'll probably be able to just mix your food scraps and food waste in with your, whatever level of landscaping you already have. But if they, if you do need one, it's, it's just shy of five bucks a month.
And multifamilies will be set based on their volume or their
Yeah. So multifamily and commercial, because, as James said, because they are so different, our representatives go out and visit every single one of those establishments at least once a year as part of these requirements, to look at their service levels, what they need, what they don't need. And we're always trying to help them, you know, hey, the more recycling, the more organics you do, you can reduce the size of your trash, which means you can reduce your overall bill. So that's something we're already always working with them, to help each one with their needs. One of the things that our people are really good at is looking at the, the footprint of their establishment. So multifamily complex, or a small commercial place that doesn't have a lot of parking, where are they going to put this container? We have lots of different options to choose from, and we can help them with the placements of where to put those barrels. There are even some allowances in the law that if you don't produce enough organics as a commercial establishment, you could be exempt from having to place an organic container at your place of business. Unless you want one, everyone's always free to have one, but there are some exemptions that some people can claim. So we work with every single account on all of those things.
So a, a lot of people, they take their organic waste and they, they freeze it. Typically, you freeze it in a plastic bag. The compostable bags, I've yet to find one that actually holds up. If you've got anything, if you've got a chicken carcass or something like that, it just, it'll blow through it. Do you have anything to help residents when they're trying to, to get this way, so that, you know, if you've got a frozen chicken carcass, and it's in a plastic bag, and you go out and try to get the, separate the, the chicken from the bag, sometimes it's, you know, it's frozen in there, it's stuck. How are you helping residents do that? What's kind of the thought process of that, kind of, what kind of guidance do you have?
So here's, here's kind of the hierarchy that we're presenting to our cities and in that ongoing education. So freezing your food scraps is one way that people like to do that, and then they maybe, they take it all out once a week. Other ways that you can do it is you just go scrape all of your food waste out every, every day. Maybe keep it a little pale in your kitchen and go empty it out in your, in your new bear-resistant green barrel that's going to be locked. As far as what to put it in, our first, the first thing we'd ask people is to throw it into the green barrel loose. Throw all the food scraps in there loose, because it's going to mix in with the yard waste. If you don't want to throw it in there loose, and you want to use some type of a bag, we ask that they use a paper bag, because that is better than a plastic bag as far as composting. If they don't have a paper bag, and they want to use a plastic bag, we ask that it be a clear plastic bag, because when it does get to our facility, our organics facility, we're not going to be able to compost that plastic. No matter what anyone thinks, you can't compost plastic in a matter of thirty days. So we need to take all of the plastic out. We eliminate the contents of that bag, remove the plastic, and the plastic will end up being thrown away. In those instances, council member, where it's stuck to the food, we're going to have to make that determination as we see it. Is there more food or more plastic, if something's stuck together? That's kind of the hierarchy, hierarchy of what we ask residents to do.
How many cities do you serve?
Gosh, exclusively, somewhere around twenty-seven, twenty-eight, getting close to thirty.
How many have implemented the SB thirteen eighty-three requirements?
Probably at least two-thirds right now. Yeah.
Have we met the twenty-twenty goal of the fifty percent reduction in organics from landfill?
The state has not been able to give us that information yet, so we're still waiting on it. And it's a state measurement. There's not a city measurement that says, did Sierra Madre reduce their organics by fifty percent? They don't do that. It's a statewide thing. We're still waiting for the twenty-twenty results of, of the entire state and all the programs to come out.
When will your dashboard go live?
Our dashboard is live already with other cities, and so, assuming everything moves forward, it's just a matter of our people meet with your staff to actually give them a presentation and teach them, and it goes live immediately.
And then, and then my last question, the senior commission gets some sort of revenue share on recyclables. Is that, so are you aware of that, and does that change at all with the new contract?
That stays the same. The recycle rebate?
Councilmember Parker's is talking about an entirely different arrangement with the County of Los Angeles. Yeah, so that's separate from
All right. But the rebate we already have in place remains the same with the city, yeah.
Any more questions?
I have a question about the audits, the residential audits. So your people will be going through once a year, and you'll be observing people's barrels, the beer can and the black can, not the recycle can?
The recycle as well.
Okay, so all three of them?
Yeah.
And what type of record is kept, and where does that record end up, who has control over it?
So we keep the record. We have control over it, so to speak, and we share it with the city through the dashboard. Our employees will have digital devices where they'll take pictures, they'll keep record of everything that they see. The assumption is that everything's going to look good as they lift the lids, and as we do the other waste characterizations. It's just in the one-off cases where we would take the pictures, and we would make a note of which address, and how many times we're working with them, visiting with them. And we have not experienced yet any problems, like where we've had to escalate it, you know, because someone is just habitually contaminating their barrels on purpose. People just aren't doing that, from what we've seen so far.
But if they did, what happens?
There's a process in the amendment that spells it out, and then it's about five steps. The first three steps involve all of the education and the visits, and the communication with us and the resident or the business owner. And it's not till steps four or five where we have the ability to assess a penalty on that account, and we explain it to them, and the reason why is because if they're going to continue to contaminate a barrel, we're going to have to pick up that barrel with a separate truck from either, from what we're already sending out, because we have to treat the contents of that differently than everything else. So it's going to cost us money to deal with it.
So is it treated strictly as a, as a transactional? So is it tr- is street, treated strictly as a, as a transactional relationship between the customer and you, or is the city involved from a, from, from a, at any point?
It's between the city, it's between the customer and us. We keep the city involved as far as communication to let them know what's going on, if it ever gets to that level. So we're not just gonna assess penalties without first going through the city manager to make sure, hey, here's what's going on, here's what we're gonna do, we've explained this to the customer. We're not in the business of wanting to go around and assess fees and penalties.
So I assume you have, you'll have people who, if you have a, a, a resident that's out of compliance, you'll have people who have training and capability to, from the lack of a better term, PR this with them as opposed to the guy who's running the truck who just gets out and starts to jam you up because you're?
Exactly. We have a group of recycling coordinators that we've hired that specifically go around and do this exact thing. They're already doing it in other cities.
Okay.
And it's not the drivers.
So you have experience in it?
Yes. The drivers are doing their thing.
I can imagine that that might be somewhat challenging.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. This is all happening before the drivers get to the, to the containers.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, please.
Actually, where I thought you were going, um, in terms of the record-keeping, I just, it just triggered. Um, in terms of privacy and data collection and all of that, I mean, I, I assume that you guys have thought about, you know, if you're taking pictures of people's trash, that if there's any, you know, protected confidential information, that there's some protection over the, you know, the, the use and the storage of that information.
Yes. Um, in fact, that's why each city's, each city has its own dashboard, first of all, with a password that they can only view their city's contents. And then everything else is stored in our system, which everything that we keep is private and confidential. We're a privately-held company, and so we have the luxury and ability of being able to do that even more than a public agency would be able to. Yeah.
Thank you.
Do we still have the same, um, uh, large pickup and, and ability every year? Is it two?
Bulky item, is that what we're talking about? Yeah, that has not changed. Yeah. All of the other great components of the contract are remaining the same. This is really just tackling the things that James spelled out in Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three. Yeah.
I think it was, what, over a year ago, you were here explaining this to us, and we were, we, we put the subcommittee together. Um, I, one thing that struck me, it was part of the, the education process, because some things can go and some things can't, and I don't know if that's changed in the last year and, in a few months, but the one example that I brought up last time was, you know, basically everything food-wise, bones and all that goes in the green can, but I, it struck me in the pamphlet that was on the slide about a year ago that shellfish goes in, but not shellfish shells. And I, as far as the education process, I mean, would that be? I don't know that, that many people have shellfish shells, but would that be a huge contamination issue if they're making that mistake? And how's the education piece go for that and things like that?
Yeah, when we see one or two things in the barrel that aren't supposed to be in there, that's not gonna be deemed a contaminated barrel, for, for example. However, that is gonna trigger maybe some special communication with that customer. But the overall communication, the enhanced quarterly recycling communication education that we talked about, all of those things are spelled out. In fact, we have a marketing department who we have beefed up over the last couple of years specifically for this, where we have mail pieces, things that are on our website, we are on, we are constantly updating it and changing it as we go, as we go forward, for things such as the shellfish in contents versus the shell itself.
And I believe we talked about having a QR code on the can. Is that still something we're thinking of that then would bring up sort of these categories, like, you know, don't put this in this can, you know, kind of, kind of thing? So people can do that as they're like, at their can.
Yeah, we love QR codes. That's something that we talked about, that we're, we can put on these new green bear-resistant barrels so that the customers can just, you know, scan it and look at it for themselves. We use QR codes already on a lot of our mail pieces, so.
Uh, uh, in August, I was camping in San Diego, and they had actually dumpsters, uh, in the campground that had the organics. Um, and that was really, really smelly. Um, and so the way we typically, we bag up our trash and put it in the black can, and that kind of abates some of the stuff sticking to the can and, and the smell and the odor, and that's kind of the, one of the reasons we need bear cans for City of Sierra Madre. Um, I'm kind of thinking a year and a half from now on Trash Day, what that odor's gonna be like on Grandview. Um, and is there, is there any process of Athens, and maybe this is an extra fee, to like, clean these cans periodically? 'Cause we're not, we're water-wise here, and we don't like using our water for anything other than the, the ne- necessities. Um, and spraying your can out, I think, I, I don't know, it goes down the, goes down the gutter, and I, I, I could see issues there. Is there any way, any solutions to that issue?
We do have options for barrel cleaning services that we can provide anywhere in any of our cities. Of course, there is a fee for that, because it's, it's expensive to do that. However, as far as putting all this food and food scraps into those green barrels, right now, it's pretty much going into the black barrels, mixed in with a bunch of trash, as we all know. Now, it's gonna be the same contents, just being mixed in with a lot of landscaping and, um, yard waste, assuming most, most residences have yard waste that they're putting in there. What we're finding is that yard waste soaks up a lot of the food juice, if you will, the food scraps, sometimes better than the trash has been doing it. We're not finding any huge issues where, oh, now this city's starting to smell because they're separating their organics out. It's just simply going from being mixed with trash to being mixed with yard waste and yard trimmings.
Yeah, my point was, but generally, it was in some type of bag within the black can. Um, that's generally what we would see.
Yeah.
Um, and as, as you go through Sierra Madre, you can see us better than our neighbors. Not trying to say anything about our neighbors, but our, our landscapes are going le- less and less away from grass and those types of things. So I don't know, I, I'm just, I'm just trying to think of the future and what, what might occur here in Sierra Madre.
Well, like I said, we do, we do provide barrel cleaning services. If that becomes something that, uh, needs to be done on an ongoing basis, we can talk with the city about that. But if someone calls and requests it, we can do that.
All right, and this might just be more of a curiosity. I'm not trying to waste anybody's time, but as far as the methane, the whole process of composting creates, creates, right, a gas or some type of? No? Okay.
It's, it's totally.
I'll look to the environmentalists. So I, I, I'm thinking like, how does this get rid of the, the problem in the state? Um, but obviously, it does.
Uh, let me try and explain this in the simplest terms for myself as well. The methane that is produced by organics in a landfill is what we're trying to reduce and eliminate, because the organic sitting there in the landfill is what's producing that methane. Now, it's going to a facility where it's being mixed with other ingredients. There's a whole process that is essentially removing and eliminating that methane from going up into our atmosphere. And it's capturing it, and I mean, it's.
I should've asked you offline. Thank you.
Well, I know, but, but it's, it's a good question. So, so the difference is basically is oxygen.
Yeah.
So in the, y- you have what's called an anaerobic environment in a landfill. There's no oxygen getting to that organic material, and so as it breaks down, it creates methane in it. In a composting environment, you actually, it's an aerobic pr- process, meaning you've got oxygen in it, so they're mixing it around. And so you've got the, it's a different set of bacteria that are in there that break the food down. And so by doing the composting, there still is some, some methane, and there's some, some nitrous oxide and, and some nitrates that come out of it. But really, the key thing, that, that, that potent methane, that global warming gas, it's twenty-five times more potent than CO2 in a hundred years, and eighty-six times more potent in a twenty-five-year ti- time period, gets eliminated, more than you needed to know.
Thank you, Kel. No, no, I, I feel like.
It does create paralysis, though, where you can have small fires, which we had.
Oh, I do, I do recall my grandmother's.
Yes.
Well, Glendale, the Glendale.
We had one here in Sierra Madre when we do the, the distribution of the compost.
So any more questions for our, uh, guests or management analysts, Carlson, before we get a public comment?
Can I say, can I add one thing to?
Yes, please.
Markers, as he talked about the oxygen at American Organics, we, we pump in the oxygen from the bottom up. And we're constantly pumping in that oxygen to help with that process, something new that we put into our American Organics facility in the last couple of years.
That's great.
Yeah.
And that reduces the fire as well, doesn't it?
It does.
Yeah.
It does. You're moving it around more often. It's usually when it just sits there is when you're asking for a fire. Yeah.
All right. We've exhausted the questions. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Chance we could take a short break?
I think, uh, there's a good chance. Let's, um, we've been sitting here for a while.
Should we finish this item? I mean, we're close to finishing it.
Yeah, let's, can we?
Is that okay?
Okay.
Okay.
You know what?
There's probably not a ton of public.
Yeah, let's, let's see how much public comment we have, and then we can make that, that, uh.
We, I don't have any speaker cards for this off, uh, topic.
Okay. I, I think we're gonna have a discussion or probably around the two eighteen and all that, so I think it probably now is a good time for a break, because the, the discussion might, might carry for a while. So let's return at eight o'clock. That's about nine minutes. Is that enough? Or is that too much?
That's fine.
Good? Okay. We'll reconvene at eight o'clock. Okay, um, you know, we, we jumped to public comment, um, but I, I realize there wasn't, there wasn't any questions regarding the two eighteen process. I don't know if any of us, it was all about the, the program. Does any, anybody here have any questions about how the process will work? I think Management Analyst Carlson gave some good insight into some of that, but, um, I want to bring it back to council for those questions if there is anything specific. Looks like no. Okay.
Maybe it's, maybe it's worth just, uh, if, if Management Analyst Carlson can give us like a minute or two on the two eighteen process so that we're all fresh and familiar with it.
Makes sense.
Yeah, sure, sure. We've, um, made contact with a organization, a firm called NBS. They've done, um, worked for us before, most recently the Downtown Business District. We had to do a Prop two eighteen for, um, they came back with a, a figure that was very reasonable for us for this style of election. Uh, I believe it's eight thousand dollars, maybe it's ten thousand dollars. They will do all of the mailing to every parcel owner in Siriamadre. Um, we will, well, part of the reason why I'm asking you to give me a tentative approval so we know what to put on the, the mailer. If fifty per, fifty percent plus one of all parcel owners vote no, then we won't go forward. If a parcel owner does not return their ballot, it's considered a yes. Um, it's a forty-five day process, so, um, after tonight, I will know, you know, what to tell NBS to get started on. And hopefully within a week or two, we'll get these ballots out and we can watch that.
And when you say, how many days is the process?
It's forty-five from the mailing, I, I assume, or, yeah, from when we mail it, forty-five days. Uh, at the conclusion, they are also, um, it's a public hearing, so they can vote one way or the other at the public hearing, I believe. That's the way we did it with the district. Other than that, we'll calculate all the returned ballots and make a determination at that point.
And can you remind us of what the ballots look like? It's my understanding it's a protest vote. If, so what, what happens in that? How does that process work?
Well, that, that's, um, you know, something that we can determine. We, we, we went through a lot of different styles. When we did the Downtown Business District, we had independent rate increases, so it was based on your specific parcel. This one will probably have something like I showed you, an average account for residential, an average account for multi-unit, average account for commercial. This is the raise that you would see. It would outline the, the night, the, the two-step, you know, I think it was eight percent, nine percent, nine and a half percent for two years, and then the commercial one. That will all be, uh, included. The, uh, CP, Trash CPI plus one will have to be included on that notice, so we will give them everything. But fortunately, we, we do like the, the firm and they've helped us quite a bit with our, our previous, um, Prop two eighteen's, uh, process. So we'd just like to get going on it.
And what happens if fifty percent vote no?
Fifty percent plus one vote no, then we will be somewhat at the draw, back at the drawing board. However, we could be facing some CalRecycle, um, enforcement. If we, if we are not making progress. They've been very good with us with our unique situation with the bear cans. Um, we haven't got a na- nasty gram yet, um, but it does include, you know, keeping them apprised. At least every month I talk to them, let them know how it goes. They know we're in front of you today. So I hope to get back to them and stave them off a little bit.
And can we, can we put that on the, the two eighteen notice? Is that if you vote no, then we may get a fine from, or, or there may be enforcement action from?
Can't include it. The city attorney said no.
That sounds, yeah. Sounds like electioneering there.
Yeah.
All right.
That, that'd be great, right?
But it's the truth. I mean, it'll happen. And so, I mean, that's, that's, that's part of an informed decision, but I understand.
It's worse than that because if, the Athens won't do this work, you know, without this contract change. And so we're still, as a city, obligated to comply. So it's not just the enforcement. It's the fact that we would then have to do all the work ourselves to comply. So I think it's actually worse than just, you know, enforcement by CalRecycle. That's the messaging I think we should be putting out.
Right.
Holistically, not obviously on the notice, but to the extent that there's outreach.
I'm glad we have a communication manager to help us with that.
Councilmember Parkhurst, the city is not able to advocate one way or the other. However, the city is able to provide factual information that is, is intended to inform the public in their decision-making. But the, the facts as they're proposed may not be, uh, they have to be facts.
And that's separate from the two eighteen process, right? That'd be a separate communication piece. We, we can't provide facts on the, on the two eighteen, on the ballot?
The ballots read, if my understanding is correct, the ballots read more as, as a form letter with the ballot attached to it that, that invites the, the, the customer to remove the ballot and return it if they, if they want, if they want to do that. What, um, I would recommend is that the city include a two eighteen page on the city's website with factual information. And then within the correspondence, direct the voter to the city's website for the information.
And I'm sorry, kind of going back, uh, to the Trash CPI and the plus one. And, um, I understand the plus one. Uh, generally, I don't like things like that, but I understand the why. As far as the Trash CPI, is this the Consumer Price Index from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics specific to the nation? Because I couldn't find locality-based. Um, is it, it's the nationwide CPI index?
No, no. In, in fact, um, if, for some reason, it's stuck in my mind, there's a region that includes Anaheim, includes Orange County. And that's the CPI region that we've always used before. Now, when we're talking about Trash CPI, I don't know the answer to what region that is specific to.
It's U.S. City Average.
U.S. City Average.
Yeah, there's no MSIs or, yeah.
There's no regional to the garbage trash.
Okay.
Didn't think so. Okay. Just wanted to make sure that there was some data out there I couldn't find. Um, yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor, is it, is it worth, um, Councilmember Krebs and I giving a, a quick background on, on the process? We had a subcommittee and we've met, oh, half a dozen times or so and went through this. So we evaluated a lot of different options as we were thinking about it. Um, and, and this is the recommendation that came before the, the council today. So, you know, this isn't something, this had input from, from us as, as, as we went through the process. And I don't know, can, uh, Mayor Protem, if, if you have stuff to add, you?
Yeah, I think, so, um, if we don't have any more questions, um, I think that'd be a good part of the discussion. Any more questions for Management Analyst Carlson? Okay. We did do some more questions. I'd like to open, I'd like to open up to the public comment once more. No cards? Okay, so let's, let's go to, uh, discussion. And I think that'd probably be good for edification.
Yeah, I mean, we, we tried to, to make it so that, that, um, we got as much benefit out of this, recognizing the challenges we have with bears, trying to keep the costs reasonable on it, recognizing that, you know, every city in the state has to implement this. And we're one of the, you know, we're in the bottom tier of, of cities adopting it, which, I mean, which isn't a big deal, but we just, we have to adopt it. Um, and I think that, you know, the proposal that we've got before us today, I support it. I think it makes, it makes a lot of sense. It's a good balance of, of everything. I think we get a lot of value out, out of, out of this contract. So I, um, I, although we're not, uh, adopting the contract, we're saying proceed with the two eighteen process. I, I, I think it's, it's something that, that a resident should, should be happy with, well, not happy with, should be satisfied with. It's just that, that it is, um, we've done the best we can based on this requirement by the state.
Yeah, I would, I would just add that in terms of the, um, financial proposals that we looked at, that, um, uh, James and the Finance Department sort of analyzed and provided kind of information about what that would look like for an average customer in each category, I, I feel like we, we decided to recommend kind of the middle range. There was, there were, um, proposals that would, you know, push the, um, increase out over longer and make it smaller. But in the end, you were effectively paying more. And then there were also proposals that would, you know, shorten the period and it would be a more dramatic increase, but then taper off sooner. And we felt like that was a bit of a, a jump, particularly, um, in light of all of the other jumps in cost that have been going on. And so we sort of chose the middle ground, which was, you know, a little bit longer phase in, which means it's a little bit more overall than it would have been if it had been a quick phase in. But those quick phases would have been, you know, a, a, probably a more noticeable jump for, for customers. So just wanted to kind of give that, that background. And then I just want to say that, um, um, Management Analyst Carlson, I mean, just really went above and beyond. I mean, from the beginning, had sort of created, looked at the contract, thought about all of the things that, um, you know, that the city in Athens had done over the years and, and made a list of all of the things that, you know, worked in the contract, things that didn't work, things that, you know, could be improved, things that we could ask for that we didn't already have, and just really fought. And frankly, I think we got almost all of the things on his list. And so I really want to commend him for that and, and, and commend Athens for being a, a willing partner.
I, I know this is probably a question, but adding the two years to the evergreen, what does that make the current contract? Um, how, how much longer is it?
Twenty-seven, is that right? Two years?
It, it, it goes from twenty-five years to twenty-seven years. Um, that is a, a major component of the one time, I call it a signing bonus because I'm a baseball fan. But it was ten years ago that we went from ten years to twenty-five years rolling, and we received a hundred thousand dollars. But I also want to be clear that that is a, a evergreen contract for a without cause. We have a lot in our contract. If they don't meet the requirements of their contract, that doesn't mean we wait twenty-seven years to terminate. That's just if we decided, let's just test the waters. We can't really do that. And we've kind of gotten to that, that situation about ten years ago anyhow, so.
Thank you. Any more?
Yeah, we actually, we actually discussed that as well and felt like honestly that the, at least currently, the opportunity to, to seek out other, um, carrier services was not worth, you know, not getting the benefit of the extra two years on the. Plus personally, going from twenty-five to twenty-seven didn't feel, you know, the jump from ten to twenty-five was the material jump. Two more years didn't feel that much different to me, frankly.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, please.
Nice job, everybody. I mean, this is a really impressive list of accomplishments we got here. And, um, Councilmember Parkhurst, Mayor Protem, nice work. Management Analyst Carlson, again, fine work. And I, I want to reiterate or add my, I guess my, add my, uh, thanks to Athens for being such a, a fair-minded and, and willing partner here. I think this is gonna be ultimately a, a good deal for us.
Anything to add, Councilmember Lo?.
Nope. I have been listening and I think I liked the presentation and I appreciate the questions and answers and appreciate all your hard work.
Yeah, thank you to the, uh, the subcommittee for the hard work. And this has been, what, a little over a year? And, uh, Management Analyst Carlson, I know the, the work that went into this. It was important to me that we, we had this bear given the issue, that the bear can issue was, was, was taken care of without having a huge increase to our residents. And I feel like, uh, and then all the other enhancements that we have to do because of the state law on top of it. And I feel like we've accom, you have accomplished, I don't want to say we, because I wasn't part of that subcommittee, but you have accomplished that. And, um, kudos go to you for your negotiations, um, all the, all the iterations of, uh, potential, uh, contracts and how, how the increases would occur through time. I, I appreciate your thoughtfulness. And, um, I'm comfortable with, with, uh, giving guidance. I think that's what we're gonna be doing, giving guidance regarding the, the Prop two eighteen vote because we don't have a contract in front of us till after that vote. Um, so do we have a motion?
I do want to go on record that this should have been a funded mandate. I mean, it is entirely ridiculous that the state would impose this kind of requirement on municipalities, you know, willy-nilly and not take into account the fiscal ability of, you know, municipalities to actually bear this cost. And I thank you, I thank Athens for stepping into the breach because, you know, most cities could not have done this without, you know, significant support. But, I mean, it's of all, I mean, I'm sure there's many that are, that are, that are disappointing, but this one seems particularly egregious given that they knew that it was gonna be a significant cost.
Yeah, I'm, I, point taken. I, I'm, I'm looking at cities that have their own, their own, you know, trash, uh, utility. And I, I'm scratching my head because thankfully there, we have somebody who has economies of scale and they could, they could deal with this. If we were on our own, I don't know how we would have ever accomplished this, so.
Anyway, sorry to derail, but.
No, that's, that's.
I wanted to put that on record.
No, that's, thank you for that because that is, we do have these mandates from the state that are going to affect not just the city, but our residents specifically in the pocketbook. It's unfortunate.
I'd like to make a motion that we can, um, approve the proposed amendment with Athens Services and that we direct staff to initiate the Prop two eighteen fee process. Second.
Any further comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, moving on to our last agenda item, the public hearing, um, regarding the appeal of the Planning Commission decision approving a request for a conditional use permit amendment and an addendum to the mitigated negative declaration to update the Alverno Heights Academy master plan at two hundred North Michilinta Avenue. We heard from, um, Director Gonzalez that these don't come up very often. And how do, how do we, we, we talked about the procedure and how do we deal with it and how are we gonna go forward? Um, my, my main profession is working as an expert witness, so I've been in lots of trials, uh, probably a hundred or more, actually testifying in, in front of a judge. Uh, and the process tends to go, the individual bringing the suit gets to go first, they bring their arguments, they bring all the issues regarding the problems that they have. The trier fact listens and then the other side goes. And, um, I didn't know how late we were gonna be here, so, um, I thought we would give, uh, the Stevens the opportunity to kind of play plaintiff, so to speak, and, um, go forward with, with that process. Next meeting, I'm assuming, uh, that the quote-unquote defense or, um, Alverno Heights Academy will be here giving some background and arguments, and then we'll go through the process of rebuttals until that's exhausted. So that I want to make sure everybody understands the, how I envision the process and how I want the process to go. And the way these rebuttals tend to, tend to go in trials is that the rebuttals can only answer or bring up the questions that were brought up previously in the previous, uh, line of questioning. Usually, it's, it's questioning. And then you get to a po, a point where it's all exhausted. So that's what I'm envisioning here. I'm not trying to, I, I want the whole process to play out. This is a, from what I understand, it's a de, de novo, um, uh, decision that we're making here. So everything's new. We have to take it as though it's new. Um, we have to put our planning commissioners' hats on. No disrespect to the planning commissioners because they do a ton of work, um, and, and make a decision here. So I'd like to open up this public hearing and, um.
Should we have the staff presentation?
Yeah, yes, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
And then, just so I'm clear, so, so we're gonna hear from the Stevens family tonight. And then this is a two-meeting item and we'll hear it on the twenty-eighth, we'll hear from the Alverno Heights Academy.
Yes, and I was envisioning a lot more people here, um, for public comment, but, um, we have what we have, but that's, that's, that's the process, yes.
And where do you plan on inserting public comment?
So if we have a presentation from staff, I'd like to hear that first, then we would have.
Any other comments? Yes, please.
Nice job, everybody. I mean, this is a really impressive list of accomplishments we got here. And Councilmember Parker's mayor pro tem, nice work. Management analyst Carlson, again, fine work. And I I want to reiterate or add my, I guess, my add my thanks to Athens for being such a fair-minded and and willing partner here. I think this is going to be ultimately a good deal for us.
Anything to add, Councilmember Lo?
Nope. I have been listening and I think I like the presentation and I appreciate the questions and answers and appreciate all your hard work.
Yeah, thank you to the the subcommittee for the hard work. And this has been, what, a little over a year? And management analyst Carlson, I know the the work that went into this. It was important to me that we we had this bear given the issue that the bear can issue was 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 taken care of without having a huge increase to our residents. And I feel like and then all the other enhancements that we have to do because of the state law on top of it. And I feel like we have you have accomplished, I don't want to say we, because I wasn't part of that subcommittee, but you have accomplished that. And kudos go to you for your negotiations, all the all the iterations of potential contracts and how how the increases would occur through time. I appreciate your thoughtfulness. And I'm comfortable with with giving guidance. I think that's what we're going to be doing, giving guidance regarding the the Prop two eighteen vote, because we don't have a contract in front of us till after that vote. So do we have a motion?
I do want to go on record that this should have been a funded mandate. I mean, it is entirely ridiculous that the state would impose this kind of requirement on municipalities, you know, willy-nilly and not take into account the fiscal ability of, you know, municipalities to actually bear this cost. And I thank you. I thank Athens for stepping into the breach because, you know, most cities could not have done this without, you know, significant support. But I mean, it's of all, I mean, I'm sure there's many that are that are that are disappointing, but this one seems particularly egregious, given that they knew that it was going to be a significant cost.
Yeah, I'm point taken. I'm I'm looking at cities that have their own their own trash utility. And I I'm scratching my head because thankfully there we have somebody who has economies of scale and they could they could deal with this. If we were on our own, I don't know how we would have ever accomplished this, so.
Sorry to derail, but.
No, that's that's.
I wanted to put that on record.
No, that's thank you for that, because that is, we do have these mandates from the state that are going to affect not just the city, but our residents specifically in the pocketbook. It's unfortunate.
I'd like to make a motion that we can approve the proposed amendment with Athens Services and that we direct staff to initiate the Prop two eighteen fee process.
Second.
Any further comments, questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, moving on to our last agenda item, the public hearing regarding the appeal of the planning commission decision approving a request for a conditional use permit amendment and an addendum to the mitigated negative declaration to update the Alverno Heights Academy master plan at two hundred North Michelinda Avenue. We heard from Director Gonzalez that these don't come up very often. And how do how do we, we talked about the procedure and how do we deal with it and how are we going to go forward? My my main profession is working as an expert witness, so I've been in lots of trials, probably a hundred or more, actually testifying in in front of a judge. And the process tends to go, the individual bringing the suit gets to go first, they bring their arguments, they bring all the issues regarding the problems that they have. The trier fact listens and then the other side goes. And I didn't know how late we were going to be here, so I thought we would give the Stevens the opportunity to kind of play plaintiff, so to speak, and go forward with with that process. Next meeting, I'm assuming that the quote-unquote defense or Alverno Heights Academy will be here giving some background and arguments, and then we'll go through the process of rebuttals until that's exhausted. So that I want to make sure everybody understands the how I envision the process and how I want the process to go. And the way these rebuttals tend to tend to go in trials is that the rebuttals can only answer or bring up the questions that were brought up previously in the previous line of questioning. Usually it's questioning. And then you get to a point where it's all exhausted. So that's what I'm envisioning here. I'm not trying to, I want the whole process to play out. This is a, from what I understand, it's a de novo decision that we're making here. So everything's new. We have to take it as though it's new. We have to put our planning commissioners' hats on. No disrespect to the planning commissioners, because they do a ton of work, and and make a decision here. So I'd like to open up this public hearing and.
Should we have the staff presentation?
Yeah, yes, yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
And then just so I'm clear, so so we're going to hear from the Stevens family tonight. And then this is a two-meeting item, and we'll hear it on the twenty-eighth, we'll hear from the Alverno Heights Academy.
Yes, and I was envisioning a lot more people here for public comment, but we have what we have, but that's 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 the process, yes.
And where do you plan on inserting public comment?
So if we have a presentation from staff, I'd like to hear that first, then we would have question, we do the the normal process and then open that up to public comment.
And then the Stevens would present? I'm just wondering where how you're sequencing.
Yeah, I think would that would that process work? Yeah, because of the the, I feel as though the Stevens can then make comment in their presentation to anything that would have been brought up in in public comment, if that's amenable to you. Does that process sound fair? Okay, thank you.
I was going to add that we have a planning commissioner here present. And if I don't know that we'll have a planning commissioner at the next meeting, so if there were any questions for our planning commissioner about their decision, any mitigation measures they proposed, anything like that, today would be a good time to raise those.
Thank you. Okay, Director Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a lengthy PowerPoint presentation for you this evening. You've already mentioned the order of the agenda with a slight change. You mentioned public comment prior to the applicant's argument. We are continuing the matter to a date certain, February twenty-eighth. And also, I did put up on the slide the ex parte disclosures, if anybody had any communication with either the representatives of Alverno or the appellant. You should disclose the disclose that you can do that during discussion. Again, the applicant is Alverno Heights Academy. They enlisted a lengthy list of consultants, including environmental consultants, architects, civil engineers, traffic engineer, acoustic experts, and an arborist. The appellant is Kristen and Keith Stevens. They are represented by Jason Sanders from the Law Office of Vinskis and Associates. As you also mentioned, this is a de novo hearing, meaning that you will be reviewing the facts, evidence, and information as if the ruling by the planning commission did not occur. So this is a new hearing. The council will also consider the amendments that are identified on the slide, the master plan update, the conditional use permit amendment, and the addendum to the 2011 initial study mitigated negative declaration and monitoring program, which we refer to as the refined project. Again, back in 2011, the master plan was approved as indicated by the initial study in M and D. So we are amending the the those entitlements. And in addition, even though this is a de novo hearing, you are considering it new, you still have the ability to impose new conditions of approval or strengthening the administrative record specific to the appeal. Little background, in nineteen forty-two, the villa was constructed as a private residence. It was sold to the Sisters of Saint Francis in nineteen forty-two. In nineteen fifty-nine, this the sisters opened an all-girls school with a maximum enrollment, I believe at five hundred students. On July twenty-eleven, we had the first master plan approved by the planning commission. And I believe actually that's where the enrollment of five hundred students was actually initiated. And again, through a lot of conversations amongst the planning commission, we had a lot of residents attend the planning commission meetings early on. And instead of addressing the master plan directly, we ended up addressing the Villa CUP. And if council recalls, that that initiated amendments to both the temporary use permit as well as the filming permits. So we proceeded along the path to approve a conditional use permit for the special use events at the villa. We then continued deliberations regarding the master plan update. And in December twenty-twenty-two, the commission approved the master plan. And on December fourteenth, the appellant filed an appeal. So the project site is actually the largest school campus in the city of Sierra Madre, occupying twelve acres. It also has the least student body population. The master plan also preserves a significant amount of open space with over six acres or fifty-seven percent of the campus dedicated to open space and recreation. And according to the general plan objective L forty-one point two, it allows for the expansion of existing institutional sites provided a comprehensive master plan is approved. So the 2011 master plan improvements continues to conform with the enrollment of four hundred students. The completed projects for the master plan include the Wilson drop-off and parking lot, the athletic field, and the multipurpose building, which is still being planned in the master plan, but it has not taken place. The 2021 improvements for the master plan include returning the four hundred square foot chapel, which is in the uppermost right quadrant of the site plan. It's the small square yellow box that you see there. So that's the chapel. To the right of that is a caretaker cottage, and that'll be returned to classroom, new flexible classroom space. Just below that, you'll see a small rectangle adjacent to the yellow building, which is the performing arts building, a twelve hundred square foot addition. Immediately to the left of that is a new parking facility for thirty-one faculty spaces that is actually being replaced by what was there originally as a nineteen hundred square foot administration building, which will be demolished. And then let me focus in now. You see on the lower left-hand quadrant is the new lower school. So just a couple of issues regarding the the lower school. Actually, the adaptive reuse of the villa, the villa will stay in its place, but these the villa will also be utilized with a business office, a chapel, and the faculty lounge and student activities. Again, the historic curvature of the driveway will remain in place. And it will actually be the point of pickup and drop-off for the lower school campus on this onsite on the campus. It's not off-street. And the historic gates that are visible that you see from Highland, Michelinda, as well as Wilson Street will be maintained. So now looking at the site plan of the lower school, which is specific to TK through eighth grade coed instruction. The L-shaped building is a twenty thousand square foot partial three-story elementary school building. In the middle, the second blue building, to the right, lower school, is the administrative office. It's single-story at twenty-two hundred square feet. To the right of that is a single-story, three thousand square foot middle school. I've also highlighted some of the significant trees on the campus surrounding the middle school. The larger one that you see at the center of the collection of buildings is the Morton Bay fig tree. And just north of that is an oak grove. So the configuration of the campus, lower school campus buildings are intended to preserve the significant trees on that site. There's also an athletic facilities to be constructed. You see a playground and also a sports court. Both of those are are smaller than what you would find as a tennis court. The fire marshal also instituted a condition of approval that included a fire truck turnaround that you see there highlighted in tan. So the architectural concepts of the new buildings will be differentiated from the villa's materials as design as required by the Secretary of the Interior Standards because of its proximity to the villa. These are not the concepts that are being proposed by Alverno Heights Academy. These are just kind of inspirational concepts that they've identified. The design will also use drought-tolerant native landscaping, which will be a requirement, and and water capture solutions as required by LED. And as each phase of the design is implemented, the applicant applicant will be required to submit plans for conformity review to both the staff as well as the planning commission to ensure compliance with the approved master plan, general plan objectives, and designing codes. Provided our conceptual massing models, the the one on the top view is from Michelinda Avenue looking northeast. The view from at the bottom is the view from West Highland Avenue looking north. So you can see that the buildings are somewhat obscured from existing plant material. These are section elevations, and they are depicting basically a cross-section. The image on the top is on Michelinda Avenue or Highland Avenue, actually. And it's cutting across, you see the residence across the right-of-way. You see the the elementary school, three-story component of it. And then as it proceeds up the grade, it turns into a two-story element. And then you see the multipurpose building as a massing model in the future. The image on the left, looking down Highland Avenue, you see residents, the lower school, administrative building, the middle school, and then the villa in the background. Wanted to point out the setbacks along Highland Avenue. So you see Highland Avenue has a sixty-foot right-of-way. The building face is set back from property line eighty feet. And on Michelinda Avenue, which has a sixty-four foot right-of-way, the building is set back twenty feet from property line. The concept lower school landscape plan indicates new landscaping along the Michelinda frontage to further conceal the building to provide visual buffer. And there's also additional plant material occurring on the campus around the lower school component, all of which will be drought-tolerant materials. The Wilson Street landscape plan has actually been implemented during the planning commission deliberations. There were a number of conversations and public comment. One of them was regarding the Wilson Street landscaping that the residents across the street could still see the athletic field. They wanted to ensure that that was concealed further, citing that a lot of the existing plant material that was installed at the time was taking some time to grow. So Alverno went ahead and installed additional plant material, which included four twenty-four-inch box olive trees and seven Italian cypress trees along that edge. So the sequin analysis summary identifies the mitigation measures and imposed conditions of approval to protect the surrounding and adjacent properties. And it does that by imposing limits on enrollment, the use of school facilities, limits on excessive noise, and also prohibiting hosting concurrent activities such as film or photography activities, temporary uses, and other religious events. So the, everything is based on the original, as I mentioned. This was originally approved in 2011. This is an amendment to all of the actions that we've talked about. And what the 2020 addendum identified was that the certified 2011 continues to apply, the M and D continues to apply, including all eighteen of the mitigation measures. And the all of the actions that I just stated before are to protect the surrounding and adjacent properties. It was also determined that the ambient noise levels remain consistent with mitigation measures, including neighborhood traffic counts that remain at a level of service A. And we'll go into a lot of those details as I progress through the sequin analysis. Another part of the sequin analysis was an updated arborist report prepared in 2021 by Arbor Gate Consulting. They identified thirteen protected oak trees on the property. They ranked them and they found them to be good to inadequate health and displayed structural defects. Two of the oak trees are proposed for removal. Those are located on the northern end of the new proposed elementary school. They also identified four non-protected specimen trees. The Morton Bay fig tree that is was at the center of the campus that I showed you at that image is depicted here. That will be protected and placed as well as for other trees on campus. Preservation remedies include avoiding the drip line and also keeping those trees away from other non-permeable surfaces such as parking lots. Another report that was updated was the cultural resources technical report by Sappho's Environmental, prepared in 2021. Essentially, the technical report determined that the there would be a less-than-significant impact of the villa due to the construction of the lower school campus. There was also an updated 2020 traffic simulation model. The simulation model was put in place during the COVID-19 pandemic when in-person learning was not permitted. So in order to assess traffic, the traffic consultant applied a half percent per year growth factor, and that would account for over a ten-year period. Their analysis strictly focused on morning peak traffic hour conditions. And the model determined that the addition of the lower school would not result in any significant traffic impacts at any of the steady intersections during public comment. Yes?
Looks like you may have skipped a slide.
Slide twenty. No, I don't think it's there.
Okay.
There's a there's a slide in our packet.
That'll be coming up next.
Oh, okay.
So the during the planning commission discussion regarding the early discussions regarding traffic and noise, the planning commission determined that it would be beneficial for the applicant to go back and meet with the residents to try to resolve some of the issues as much as possible. Alverno conducted three workshops in January, April, and May 2023. And all of those workshops and the minutes are captured in tab one of your master plan supplemental documents. So with that, the Alverno decided to do another traffic count that was taken in person in February 2021 and November 2022. The counts were conducted on weekdays, because that's when the greatest amount of traffic activity would be taking place as opposed to weekends. And the February counts were taken over a three-day period while enrollment at the school was three hundred and seventy-four students. And that also included after-school student events on one of the days. So the results of the in-person traffic analysis determined that the life counts result in no significant traffic impact at the steady intersections. And actually, the results were less than that predicted by the traffic simulation model that we talked about that took place in 2020. So the traffic actually reduced. The traffic noise analysis was also updated in 2020 twenty in 2022. And it did not include any considerable change in traffic noise around the project area. It also showed a decrease in terms of the total daily vehicles trips from the upper school. The lower school vehicle trips, R and drop-off and P and pickup are also less than a three percent increase due to the change in enrollment. And this accounts for a composite noise level increase of less than one decibel, the additional traffic. A 2021, 2022 school noise source analysis was also prepared by CSDA. They're the acoustic engineers in this case. And they monitored in-person levels, including the. And they monitored in-person levels, including the Michelenda parking lot. The studies determined that noise levels from the school operations remain consistent with the mitigation measures identified in 2011. Another discussion point that was also raised by the appellant was that the Michelenda parking lot was not studied. As identified, there is a sport court used by the lower school students, both for recess and sport play and activities. In actuality, the planning commission did address this. They did ask Alverno to come back to assess the effects of applying a rubberized asphalt surface instead of simply an asphalt surface to see if that would buffer noise during play activities, and also to determine if there's other sound barriers that could be applied to the area around the sport court and that landscape grounds. So Alverno did come back. They did do an analysis of that. They found that the rubberized asphalt is really not, would not really have much benefit. Really, rubberized asphalt surfaces are meant for street segments to reduce sound volume from vehicles, you know, driving through the space. So that wasn't going to be really a viable solution in terms of a sound buffering benefit. And also, they did look at applying sound walls or barriers of some structure, and they were looking at something of the nature of 18 feet in height. And planning commission and staff thought that that would not be a suitable solution for buffering sound. The commission also asked in terms of response to the use of the upper Michelenda parking lot was to expedite the construction of the playground and sport court. And they also indicated that those improvements should be completed within 18 months from CUP approval. They thought this would help alleviate much quicker instead of waiting for the lower school construction and sports courts to be built at the same time to expedite the sport court play area. Alverno has agreed to do that. They provided a grading plan that showed the temporary sports court in that location at the lower school component. Also, to strengthen the record, the appellant did note that there were no use restrictions on the Michelenda parking lot. Staff is in agreement with that. The planning commission also did not impose any use restrictions on that lot. So included in the city council resolution, staff and working in consultation with Alverno drafted this use restriction for the lot. And it includes that the Michelenda parking lot shall be for parking, student lunch recess, and sports team activities, that there shall be nighttime games, player sports practices, no amplification for games, player sports practices. However, the lot may be used for school-related assemblies, dedications, and fundraising activities. Amplified sound would be subject to the Sierra Madre Noise Ordinance, and speakers should be directed internal to the campus and away from residential homes. The parking lot shall also not be used for non-school events with the exception of civic organizations, and also the permitted photography and filming under chapter 5.36 of the Sierra Madre Municipal Code. So that's included as condition number 11 in your council resolution. The planning commission and staff also did not include additional findings regarding the conditional use permit number five. In the appeal, it stated that the planning commission should have identified objective HC14 and 14.1, which addressed sound mitigation. And we also included two new objectives in objective or finding number five of the CUP to address the issues regarding that residents deserve a residential character of the city free from excessive noise from transportation or fixed generators. Really, this particular objective is addressing more construction noise and generator noise. So we address this as temporary construction activity that could be mitigated through various measures. Also, it identified that the concurrent events on the site, we also impose new conditions. There are conditions of approval in the current findings, and we included those that the, this noise will be mitigated due to the limit of the number of students to prohibit concurrent events onsite, to impose new filming and temporary use standards at the school, and facilitate the development of a temporary lower sport court to reduce noise impacts around the surrounding neighbors. Also, HC14.1 identifies, formulates measures to mitigate noise sources through compatible land use planning and the discretionary review of development projects. So again, this is going back to building construction that would attenuate noise from midday elementary school and lunch break periods. So what the planning commission was indicating was that really, once you have the lower school built out, including upper school improvements such as the multipurpose building, that the buildings in themselves would help attenuate noise and capture noise within the campus. That won't happen until build-out. So the conditional use permit and master plan finding summary, which includes master plan findings, modification to development standards, as well as the conditional use permit. Each one of these actions requires the city council, in this case, to address each of those findings. Those are included in your packet. I'm not going to go through every single one of those. What I prepared was a summary of some of the mitigation points. Number one is that the mitigation measures and conditions will protect surrounding and adjacent properties, including the limits on enrollment and use of school facilities, that the master plan preserves a significant amount of open space, as I mentioned, over six acres dedicated to open space and recreation, that the proposed use is adequate in side size encompassing a 12-acre campus, that parking is accessible from Michelenda Avenue, Wilson Street, and egress from lower school drop-off will be from Highland Avenue. All of this helps to distribute the traffic impacts from the campus. That the master plan will decrease traffic on Highland Avenue, Wilson Street, and Grandview due to changes in school enrollment. So the 400-student cap will then reduce the high school numbers of students who drive to the campus. And that's where the change in vehicle miles traveled to the campus on the upper school drops down to 96. The master plan does exceed the city's parking codes, and the villa will continue to be preserved as a major historic resource. Wrapping up here on the conditions is that the pedestrian vehicle entrances to the campus will be maintained. Updated perimeter landscaping will also improve the character of the surrounding campus and provide an additional screening material. And the concept architecture for the new buildings will be differentiated from the villa. And the project condition, there is, as I mentioned, that there is a condition imposed that each phase of the development that is implemented will be reviewed for conformity review with the planning commission and staff specific to the master plan, general plan, and zoning standards. And that leads us to the project alternatives. And actually, I do think I skipped a slide, which was tribal consultation. So tribal consultation, staff initiated that conversation with the Gabrielino Band of Mission Indians, specifically the Kis Nation. During that consultation, they wanted the city to add four additional mitigation measures to the sequo analysis. So those are included in the mitigation monitoring program. And specifically, what they cite is that the, if there's any discovery of cultural artifacts or human remains, that any activity would have to cease. And also, an archaeologist will have to be brought in to monitor continued excavation, and that goes for any artifacts beyond human remains. I think that was the only slide that I might have gone through.
Yeah.
The alternatives, again, is to affirm the planning commission decision, to modify the action of the planning commission, to strengthen the public record, as I described, as well as adding a condition of approval to condition number five in the CUP finding. You could also refer the matter back to the planning commission to provide staff and the applicant with the direction, or you can deny the conditional use permit application and master plan amendment. Staff is recommending that the city council modify the action of the planning commission to strengthen the record and approve conditional use permit 2103, updating the Alverno Heights Academy Master Plan pursuant to City Council Resolution 23-13. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Director Gonzalez. Right, counsel, any, any questions for Director Gonzalez? Yes, please.
Just a couple of clarifications. So this didn't require an EIR because they already had one as a part of the master plan? So this is just an amendment, it's a sequo amendment to the, to the master plan? Is that right?
It's a, an amendment to the master plan, which includes the sequo mitigation, also the conditional use permit, which is required by our general plan that they obtain a conditional use permit for master plan expansion. And, excuse me, also the action for the modification to the development standards.
So they, they already did an EIR for this?
They didn't do an EIR. It was determined that there was not a significant impact that could not be mitigated to a lesser extent. Therefore, what was decided in 2011 was an initial study was prepared, and then a mitigated negative declaration with the imposition of the 18 mitigation measures, they became less than significant.
Got it. Jumping back kind of to higher levels, we've got two conditional use permits that are, would eventually be on this property, one for events and one for the school. Is that correct?
That's correct. The CUP that regulates event is a separate.
Right.
Approved CUP for the villa.
And, oh, is for the, yeah, this for the villa?
Only for the villa for, yes, and, and that.
Events and filming, right?
And conditions of approval also regulated filming, temporary use, special events, and filming.
Got it. Okay, okay. So, so they're separate. So the current Michelenda parking lot, it's, it's used for, for some sports, for some fundraising, some school announcements. Is that correct?
That's correct, and currently recess for the lower school and play space.
And, and is, does the traffic go in and out there? It doesn't go through to Highland yet? That, that's part of the expansion, correct?
It does go through to Highland now.
It goes through to Highland now?
Goes through to Highland now, where the temporary modular classroom buildings are located on the campus at the location of the multipurpose building. So just beyond that is a drop-off zone for the elementary schools. So all drop-off and pickup is done on campus. And then the parents would exit on Highland Avenue, which they would have to make a right-hand turn towards Michelenda.
You said would exit, so they're not exiting there now?
They do exit on Highland Avenue.
So how, how is the traffic volume changing? Is it, is it changing just because of, of the enrollment and change in enrollment?
It's due to the change of enrollment, dropping the number of vehicles from students going to the upper school at 96 vehicles. So because the, the campus is capped at 400 students, they introduce new lower school co-ed facilities, it reduces the upper school capacity.
What's the max that the schools ever had?
500 students, probably through the 2011 master plan.
They had 500, and now they're coming down.
They didn't actually have 500 students enrolled. That was just the maximum, right?
That was the maximum.
Yeah, no, I don't think they've.
That's not the question, yeah.
Yeah.
The question is, what's the maximum they've had enrolled?
That I don't know. That could have been prior to the 2011 master plan approval. At that point, the 500 cap was initiated.
Can I follow that up? So are, are we to believe then the school strategy here is to reduce the influence of the high school on the campus and increase the influence of the K to eighth grade?
I think what they're trying to do is probably achieve some form of balance, but obviously with the introduction of the lower school, it would mean that the upper school enrollment would decrease.
Can I restate? So what I'm hearing, I think, is that the original traffic studies were predicated on 500, a maximum of five, or 400 or 500 students, all at a high school, meaning that the assumptions were that a great number of those high school students would be driving themselves to campus. The assumptions now, obviously, is that there will be far fewer high school students and more lower school students, and so the assumptions in the traffic studies have shifted. This isn't really based on actual enrollment. This is based on maximum enrollment, correct? So that, that basically, that the shift in enrollment is probably less actual and more theoretical based on the, the maximum?
I, that's correct, yes. However, the, one of the slides that I pointed out identified the traffic studies and noise studies that were conducted during in-person learning. At the, at, at one point, the number of students that were, or the number of students attending in person was at 374.
And we don't know what the split of that is between the lower and the upper school?
What's the, the current, so, so how much, do we know how much activity has moved from the Michelenda lot? Like, you know, has it peaked? Is it going down? Do we know anything about that? Or is that something for Alverno?
I would say that would have to be for Alverno. Essentially, the Michelenda parking lot, again, I mentioned that there was an excess number of parking spaces on the campus compared to code-required spaces. That, that particular lot was one of the flatter surfaces that would accommodate sports activity, and that's why they selected that particular site. They did study other sites. Did I answer your question on that one?
Yeah, yeah. And, and so we have to wait till the CUP is approved before, is 18 months after that that the, the other playground would be? Okay.
Can I ask a question about that, actually? So I understand, you know, from the presentation and from the materials we were provided, that part of the planning commission's recommendations was to construct this temporary lower school sports court on the south side of the property, which appears from the drawings to be almost or more, you know, closer to Highland than the parking lot, the Michelenda parking lot is to Grandview. Was there any discussion or data provided that the moving of the students from the Michelenda parking lot to this temporary sports court in the, you know, lower, you know, what would this be, south, southwest corner, wouldn't just transfer the noise problem to Highland?
You would make that assumption, and I would probably agree with that. I'm sure what will occur is we will activate a new group of residents who have similar concerns.
So there was nothing specific about this sports court that would mitigate any of the noise concerns that was being produced at Michelenda? Because it's, it's, it's not as if the new sport court would have a different orientation or a different material or anything. I mean, we're just talking about moving it from one, one end to the other, essentially.
Right. And, and again, the planning commission, when this matter goes before them, could weigh in on, you know, sound mitigation through additional plant material or other sound barriers as might be needed.
Can I follow up on that? So there was a discussion of an 18-foot sound wall, and I'm guessing that's because it doesn't meet code, but we could, we could probably come up with a way to come up with a waiver of some type, as long as it wouldn't be taking, displacing to. up with a waiver of some type, as long as it wouldn't be taking, displacing too much space. How did they come to the conclusion that that wouldn't be helpful? And how did they come to the conclusion that the asphalt, rubberized asphalt, wouldn't be helpful? What, what, what evaluation did they use?
So with the rubberized asphalt, I guess if it's a stationary surface, one of the concerns is that it's softer, and during summer months, it could heat up, and it could actually depress. So if you have, in a typical situation, I've seen it applied, and this was one of my suggestions for Alverno to explore, I've seen it applied on surface streets, again, where more so highways, where you have vehicles traveling at higher rates of speed and something not a static device, or tables, or children playing on, on the surface. So it does become much softer.
So it wasn't the issue of it wouldn't dampen the sound, it was, it was more of the utility of the surface? What about an 18-foot sound wall? Do we, do we have any idea that that would actually substantially reduce noise, or is that a non, non-starter?
That was investigated by Alverno. They had one of their architects look at that, I think even CSDA analyzed that, where it could buffer some of the noise. Part of the problem with the campus and the route, Sierra Madre, of course, we're on a gradient. So noise travels upwards, and that was the reason why we would have to, or they identified an 18-foot sound wall. And that would not just be right up against the, the parking lot, it would be in the landscaped area.
Isn't that what they're really saying, though? When they build, can, complete the buildings, they're going to be using the buildings as sound walls, and they're two-story, they're going to be 18 feet. So it seems like you could put temporary 18-foot sound walls up until the buildings are completed.
And that could be an off, option that the city council considers.
Can I?
And.
Am I? Oh, sorry, just, just to continue on that, I'm, I'm wondering, per the city attorney's point, since we have a planning commissioner here, I'm wondering if he would want to maybe weigh in on this discussion about the options about buffering sound on the, of the Michalinda parking lot and sort of the conclusion that was drawn?
Yeah, Mayor, council members, yeah. Specifically with regard to the moving of the sports court, a, as Vincent said, sound tends to travel up. And so one of the issues is the, the vegetation that's on Highland is much bigger trees than, really, we've got the streets wrong, no, I think I've got the streets, on the, whatever the lower street is.
Highland Avenue.
Than the upper. And so you have a situation where the likely sound effects of a sports court that's lower to the south on the property is going to have less impacts on the neighbors than the current Michalinda lot. And so that's one of the reasons why we focused on moving those down. One of the other issues is there, there's a balance here between putting in money on temporary measures that we're, are going to saddle the school from their eventual goal of building versus trying to make it easier for them to get to the eventual goal, because building the multipurpose room is the fix for the sound issue, for this sound issue, that's not the villa or something else like that. Because once you build a multipurpose room, those things can come inside and contain the sound. And so the, the issue, the concern that we had with the 18-foot sound wall is that the evidence that we had was that it might help, it didn't seem conclusive, but it certainly would cost a lot, and it would probably be pretty unsightly. So our thought was, money would be much better spent, and we'd probably get a better, quicker resolution by moving the sports court down to the south, and then trying to encourage the, the school to get the multipurpose room built, which in the long run is the answer. But unfortunately, we couldn't get them to commit to any timeline, and that's going to take many years.
Can I follow? How, they, they said, how many years did they, did they even commit to it, or?
They wouldn't commit, because they said it's based on fundraising.
Okay, right.
So the cost of building the, the sports court on the south was something they would commit to in 18 months.
Right.
But to be clear, they're talking years for the multipurpose room. And, and it was approved on the last one, right? And it's not built, so.
So, so this is.
It's not happened tomorrow.
So this is likely a question for Alverno, but in any of the discussions, do you know where they are in their capital campaign? Did anywhere kind of, okay.
We, we tried to push these same questions, right? And get commitments to when that stuff would be built, and we didn't get answers. But I do share the concern that, you know, if you put on a, a, a number of additional temporary costs, you just push back the final solution.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Thank you. Any other questions for Commissioner Hut while he's up here?
Okay, do you want me to give my spiel now, or wait?
Is that, could it be outside public comment? That's, that's okay? Yeah, go ahead and give a spiel, since you're here.
Well, I, I just wanted to address two specific concerns that I had, or, or comments, and also answer any questions you have. I, I think the context, though, here is important, that the key to this project, and the most difficult thing to deal with is sound. It's ephemeral, it's hard to measure, it's not there when you go there, it's not like a building, right? So planning commissioners go, we look at the site, we can see the building, we know what plans look like and what they're going to build, but that's not the same with sound. And I can tell you, I went to this site many times, both during the day and at night, and although I didn't have a certified sound meter with me to test, I can tell you, sometimes the sound was fine, and sometimes it was really loud. And so, you know, it's a sort of subjective thing, it's difficult. It was hard for us to sort of get a grip on some of these things that are different than, you know, building heights and, and view sheds and things like that, which are much more in our wheelhouse. But, you know, we did our best to try to balance the applicant's rights versus the neighbor's concerns, and I think one of the big issues was the sports court and, and moving it down. I want to draw your attention to planning and community development condition of approval number 10, sound attenuation. And this includes the installation of the sports court that we talked about. But we also included on this a line that says, consult with city, city staff regarding additional vegetation and additional sound dampening mitigation measures. And one of the things that happened during this discussion was how fulsome the perimeter planting is. And we had testimony that it wasn't good enough on, on one side, which you saw the diagram of earlier, but Alverno did go out and plant there. And, you know, you can argue whether those are too small or not, but even if they're too small, now they'll grow, right? But we had conflicting testimony as to whether there were significant gaps. And I've since gone out and, and gone all the way around the perimeter, and there are some areas that there are significant gaps, especially on Michalinda. And so I think this particular condition of approval could be strengthened to say that, that they will plant screening vegetation where there are gaps within the perimeter plantings and consult blah, blah, blah. So I, I think there are places there that are gaps, that the planting along the perimeter is a pretty easy fix, a pretty cost-effective fix, and also aesthetically, one that everyone can get behind.
Commissioner Hut, could you direct us to what number 10 you're speaking of, and which document this would be within?
It's the Planning and Community Development Department Condition of Approval. So the conditions of approval are broken down by department, and this one is number 10, sound attenuation.
You repeat that more slowly.
It's in the city council resolution.
Oh, in the resolution, okay.
The resolution?
It's also in Exhibit A.
Okay.
I don't have the staff report in front of me, so I don't know what page number it is, but.
Page 49 of the PDF.
So it would help I can read it here, I've got it in front of me, if that helps, uh, council.
Director Gonzalez, where were we finding the staff report?
So, I don't, I'm not looking at the PDF, but basically, it's the staff report, it's the first attachment, attachment A. So you'll see a city attorney's letter or memo.
Yes.
The next thing is attachment A. That's the city council resolution with all the findings for the various actions. At the very end of that document are the conditions of approval. And it is on. The third page, page of the conditions.
Exhibit A?
We don't have, we don't have the resolution within our, our packet.
Not in your packet, it was, it's in your, the packet that all the copies were made.
The binders?
Not the binders, with, with the staff report.
I don't have a resolution with my staff report.
Forty-nine on our, on our.
Not the printed one, okay. That's fine. Thank you.
Well, you know the concept there.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Also, that language is, get the concept, city attorney can, can tweak that, isn't necessary. The second thing I wanted to talk to you about was height of the buildings. There's some discussion in the staff report of a 33-foot height limit, and that on a couple of occasions, the buildings go over that limit, and whether they should be reduced. And I don't think that's a good idea, and a, a number of reasons why. The first is, we should think about, the height limits for institutional are rather arbitrary and meant to be examined, reexamined when you do the master plan. It's not like residential where we understand how this stuff fits in, it's a very much more case-by-case basis. And the, and the institutional zone itself provides the ability to modify those standards under certain findings which, which we met. The, the height goes over on the multipurpose room and on the classrooms at one point. This is a really big site, they're really far setback, they can really account, they can handle that height, it won't be imposing on any of the neighbors. Architecturally and aesthetically, it looks good, it fits in with the site. And also importantly, it's a part of the current program, and if we ask them to go back and re-engineer that, especially the multipurpose room, where it might be very difficult to get the same program in if you shorten the height, it's just going to push the timeline out again. So I would recommend that you don't do that, because we could conceivably, you know, lower the height somewhat arbitrarily, and then just compound the height, or, or, I'm sorry, the, the noise issues that we have. So that's really what I have. I think, you know, as far as all the noise issues, that's not really what the planning commission does day in and day out. I think you all have, can grasp this stuff just as well. If you want to make tweaks to any of these conditions, you know, I think that's great. If you do think, though, that it's best to modify any of the buildings or the physical stuff in the master plan, I think that would make sense to kick it back to us to take a look at, get our expertise, but, you know, for instance, on the sports court, we said 18 months. There's, after that 18 months, Alverno would still use the Michalinda parking lot for, for sports and whatnot, but just to a lesser extent. So we debated whether we should just cut that off and move everything down, but we decided not to go that route, but, you know, I think that's a reasonable route if you wanted to go that way. And again, that's, that's something that I think you all could make just as good a decision on, and I don't think we have a lot of additional expertise to add, unlike, you know, the heights of the building and whatnot. Any other questions?
Council?
How many times did this come before you?
Well, keep in mind that, as you said, there's two CUPs, right? And the generators of noise are different things, but the noise is noise, and many of the mitigation measures would work for both, right? Parameter planting screens noises no matter how they're generated. So I don't remember the total number of things, but many, many, many hearings, and also, I know that I and many of the other planning commissioners went to the site many times, looked at the, the parking and pickup, the different issues with regard to the sound. You, you'll also see with regard to the drop-off, there's a condition of approval to stagger the high school versus the lower school, so that they don't queue up as much, because that was a big issue as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had one more question.
Please.
So, and I don't know if, if Director Samino was here, I think he may have been the best one, but there, you know, we're talking a lot about noise, there was other concerns raised around speed bumps, and, and so there's questions about people speeding down, what's that third?
Wilson.
Thank you, down Wilson. Has there been any evaluation on that? Do we have any formal report on kind of any evaluation on the potential for speed, speed bumps and the practicality of that, and, and the problems with potential speeding in that area?
I had a conversation with Director Samino this morning regarding the question regarding speed bumps implementation. He was indicating that there has been no study on Wilson Avenue for speed bumps. It would also be prohibitive, the street segment of the entirety of Wilson Street with frontage along Alverno is only 900 feet, with the first driveway placed around 400 feet. So it's very short street segment to implement that type of remedy, is what I was told.
How, how long is, is that stretch of Sturton Event between Canyon and Mountain Trail? Do we know, any idea how long that one is? Because we've got two speed, speed bumps in there.
Hopes.
I mean, that's, that's going to be.
There's still bumps right now.
Okay, yes, thank you, we did, yes, we did, we did learn about that. I mean, we've got from, I guess, there's, there's, I'm trying to think of where those are. It, it's much longer because you've got that curve going around it. I'm just, I'm trying to visualize 400 feet in, and, in context of Sturton Event.
Just, just anecdotally, having driven on both of those, I would suspect that the Sturton Event stretch that just runs east-west is at least double the length of the Wilson switch. The Wilson, the Wilson block there is very, it's very short.
And kind of from what I recall from the public comment email we've received on this recommendation for bumps, Councilman Parkers, I, I think it had to do with drop-off, and drop-off happens at that first driveway, 400, approximately 400 feet south of Grandview?
For the high school. It actually takes place internal to the campus for the high school, they have to go into the parking lot for drop-off, but they do, vehicles enter into the upper school parking lot from Wilson Avenue.
So any exacerbation of, or any speed issues related to Alverno would specifically, unless somebody's going all the way around the block, would be entering basically in the bisect of that street or somewhere near that.
Yeah.
Four, four.
Feet down, right, yeah, okay.
Unless somebody, like I said, comes out on Michalinda, hangs a ride on Grandview, and then comes south on Wilson, then to use Highland to get out. I don't know how many are doing that, or if that's even an issue, but that'd be the other.
Yeah.
Only, the only way, I think, speeding really would occur due to the, the school.
Yeah.
Are we getting into discussion here? Let's keep the questions.
I have a question. I have a question regarding what is a significant traffic impact? So what, what is that measure? Like, how, how would it be significant versus not significant if we're doing a traffic impact?
So even in the general plan, it identifies traffic of allowable traffic up to 2,500 vehicles per peak travel hour, AM or PM. For instance, the, I believe it was Highland Avenue, the traffic analyst determined that there is 500 vehicle, vehicles traveling Highland Avenue exiting at that point, which is far below the 2,500, 500 per day. City allows up to 2,500 vehicle trips. There's, they're actually less than that, there were about 300 vehicle trips coming from Alverno.
So it's not measuring a change, it's only measuring a, a set limit?
Yes.
So it's increasing, but it's still well below the maximum, or the?
What's permitted.
But following up on that, that doesn't really measure the actual behavior of the people, it just measures the trips.
It's the number.
Because we've heard, we've, we've had communications that some of the parents are hanging U-turns and making unsafe maneuvers, as parents do at all schools. But we have no idea, we have no quantification of that, right?
We do not, and the planning commission also heard many of the same comments. And one of the remedies is for Alverno to have monitors, traffic monitors out on the, on, out on the site and the streets, helping queue the children getting in and out of the cars, but they are out on the streets and patrolling those three points. And they do try to, to speak to some of the parents who are creating those violations.
Is, is that a formal mitigation?
I'm not sure if they apply, do you recall?
I was going to say that.
It'd be great if it was.
The, in, in terms of mitigation measures, when.
The, in, in terms of mitigation measures, when it comes to traffic, we, we are only considering VMT per state law, vehicle, vehicle miles traveled. So, per state law, we wouldn't consider.
Any mitigation.
Right. A mitigation related, related to what you're.
So there's no legal threshold to have a mitigation?
And the traffic analysis that was cited as level of service, that's not the metric that the state utilizes any longer. But we still applied it, because that's what I think the residents would really like to see what the results were. Even though it's not a legal, it's no longer used by the state.
Well, VMT is the, the SEQA issue, but as, as a condition, there's a safety issue, right? And we, we could, we could have possibly these monitors as a safety issue, rather than a SEQA mitigation issue.
Right.
Yeah, I feel like the elementary school has done a really good job recently of mitigating the traffic around that. And I think a lot of it has to do with the school personnel, you know, and cones, and
Signs.
Things, signs and things that they put out around, you know, the pickup and drop-off times of day. And I think that's really improved in a way that might be, you know, looked at as a best practice, or, you know, a helpful, helpful consultation for Alverno.
Would these issues be addressed with our mobility slash traffic analysis that we already spoke about at another council meeting? With these type of issues with speeding on Grandview, or erratic driving, and like how they remedied Sierra Madre Elementary maybe was a study, or they analyzed what was going on, maybe, I don't know, with police department, I don't know how that works. But is that, would that be?
Analyst Carl, Carlson, counsel.
Yeah, I don't have such a precise definition of what's included yet. We haven't gotten going on the UC Berkeley study. But I know there are police departments doing some, some traffic studies as well. So I would hope that they would be able to. And if I get an opportunity, I'll direct them to that location to do some studying, too.
To follow on that, we have had, the police have been out to help work on traffic out there, right?
So. Captain Amos. Captain Amos.
Good evening. So, the police department has done traffic surveys. Not formal, but we have had officers out there during, during the, during the traffic times to monitor traffic, to see if there is any issues, to do some education when necessary. I don't have the full number of times that we've been out there, but we have been out there a number of times, yeah.
So you may or may not know this, but when people see police officers, they tend to be on their best behavior.
Yes, and that is a deterrent in, in of itself. But I know I've been out there in my work car, which is not, doesn't have any markings. I didn't do any enforcement, but just, but just monitoring the area to see how the traffic was. And I, well, those, at least three times that I've been out there, I didn't, I didn't see anything significant, so, yes.
For our, our next meeting, could we just get a, a brief kind of, could you just check the number of times that's out there? Just give us like, you know, paragraph report, like, you know, approximate dates and times. It just, it'd just help us in trying to resolve this matter, that, that could be helpful.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
At one point in time, I want to say October-ish, there were, there were occasions where the exit from Montecito onto Michelinda was blocked by trapped, by, by parents in line all the way down to that spot.
Yes.
And police were sent to that, and that was fixed, right? I mean, that's.
Yes, 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 I was made aware.
What was the solution to that?
I was made aware of it. I made my patrol staff, who worked those days, the supervisors aware of it, to have our officers go out, make contact with parents to try and do more education than enforcement, so.
Right, so the learning curve, assuming, has been finished, then?
Yes, from, from my understanding, yes.
Thank you.
If I can follow up with that, staff, Alverno staff, city, as well as city of Pasadena Transportation Department, also went to the site to discuss those issues, and everybody weighed in. And that's, I think, some of the results that you see now that Alverno was implemented. And also, try not to block the Highland Avenue with people queuing up along Michelinda.
I, I'd like to ask Alverno, and I guess next week, more about their traffic, and how they, how they have traffic flow around the campus and around each of the four different streets.
Make a note of it, two weeks from now, yeah. Any other questions for staff before we, we move on? Or our planning commissioners, that's here? Great, thank you. Okay, I did change the order from what's agreed upon. There's not very many people here. I, I'm gonna ask you, as the, as the appellant, would you like to hear some public comment, if any, now? Or would you like to present, and then have public comment follow? Are you indifferent?
Do we have any?
Do we have any public comment cards?
We don't, we don't have any public comment cards, or those six emails were received and forwarded to the city council.
They were, okay. Well, that, that solves the problem. So, thank you for being so patient. Please approach, and we'd love to hear the arguments.
Good evening again, council members. My name is Jason Sanders, I'm here on behalf of the appellants. And I, what I would like to start out by explaining to the, to the council is what we are challenging, and what we are not challenging, and the options the city has to allow the school and the community to coexist, in, in harmony, we hope. So, we are not challenging the existence of the academy. We're challenging the academy's use of one parking lot, and that's the Michelinda parking lot, which has quite frankly become a nuisance. I think the council has to ask itself the, the following questions. Does it make sense, from a planning perspective, to cram activities into a location that is really meant to be a parking lot? Put another way, perhaps the school is growing too fast, and if it's cramped, if it's cramming these activities into a parking lot. There are solutions that could go a long way to abate this activity. Moving all the outdoor activities down onto the lower field is, is one example. There's also a, it, it looks like there may have been, in the past, the school has used off-site facilities to host some of these activities. That is another option. The Wilson parking lot, which will be about seven, seventy-two hundred square feet, that is another option to relocate the activities that are occurring on the Michelinda parking lot. So the, the city has options available, the applicant has options available. And I, I urge the, the, the council to think through these options, and come to the right decision. Because I, I believe that there are significant problems with the project as is. And so I'm gonna talk next about why we are here today, and what those problems are, okay? So, the reason we're here today is, is because the academy has embarked on a piecemeal land use development practice. The academy's been engaging in this ongoing practice for many years. And as a result, it's evaded SEQA review in the process. A lot of these approvals that the academy has, has obtained have been through a mitigated negative declaration. And as a matter of fact, there are two projects that are currently before the, the council from the academy. That's by definition, a piecemealed project in violation of SEQA. Those, those two CUPs really should be considered together, to consider the full environmental impact. So, that, you know, that's just an example of, of the issues you have with the, the, the land use approach that's being deployed by the, by the academy. So, so now I'd like to talk about what the problems that flawed land use approach has, has presented in the instant case. So the CUP has never, the, the staff in analyzing the CUP has never authorized the Michelinda parking lot to be used for any other, any other purpose than a parking lot. And to confirm this fact, the city need look no further than the city's staff report on appeal, and the city attorney's letter on appeal, both of which confirm that there's been no prior regulation of the parking lot. So, what does that mean? By definition, that the activity that's going on in the parking lot has not been analyzed. It's a part of the project, SEQA applies to this project, but there's no analysis of the activity occurring on that parking lot. That's another violation of SEQA. So, the, the evidence really, that, that bears out in the evidence, because there's, there's been no analysis of the activities in the parking lot. And, and that really needs to occur, in order for you guys to comply with SEQA. Now, the applicants represented at the hearing, on one of the prior hearings on this project, admitted that the Michelinda parking lot is, is a play, that there's a play area nearby, and there's also a playground nearby. So there, that's another example of how the, how the school is piecemealing and engaging in a slow creep of development. And before you know it, you have a, a nuisance on the property that really hasn't been analyzed humanitively, like it should be under SEQA. So, the decision will also violate SEQA, as I said. The staff report on appeal on page four states that the analysis undertaken in support of this addendum has determined that the facts upon which the findings were based in the 2011 MMD remain unchanged. Well, that is respectfully not accurate. Since 2011, the parking lot has been used for outdoor activities that were not analyzed in 2011. And the school have, has a course sought to introduce K through eight students at the school. So those are two facts, that did not exist in 2011, that exist now. And the problem that the city has, is that it's relying on an MMD from 2011 to support their approval in the instant case. That is a flawed analysis under SEQA, and it will result in a violation. So, the, the next issue that I think the, the council needs to consider, is that the proposed CUP does nothing to regulate the activity on the parking lot. The provision, so the, the city has proposed a, a permit provision that seeks, that it claims seeks to regulate the activity on the parking lot. The provision regulating the parking lot ironically allows all the uses that the community is currently complaining about. The proposed provision would allow the main uses of student lunch, recesses, sports activities. On, on occasion, would allow school-related assemblies, dedications, fundraising activities with amplified sound, subject to the CR Madre noise code. And would also allow some non-school-related events. So, why are we, why are these activities suddenly okay, when the city's consultant at a prior hearing, when considering where to locate the soccer field, for example, stated that, in that administrative hearing, that locating the Michelinda, the, the soccer field on the Michelinda parking lot would be too noisy and too congested for sports? If that's the case, then why is it okay to locate, for example, outdoor sports activities on that parking lot? Or amplified assembly on that parking lot? The city has an obligation to prevent the activities from becoming a nuisance, and the instant revision really doesn't do anything for that. It's, the, the provision is not a regulation, it's an authorization. I, I, I think that's, that's the key point that the, the council really needs to understand. So, and, and there are also issues with the language in the proposed provision. For example, what does, the, the provision contains the phrase nighttime. Well, what does that mean? When is the, when does nighttime begin? When does it end? Nothing's defined in that provision. So, you know, we, we appreciate the, the city's efforts, but quite frankly, they're not good enough. And none of those, none of the, the provisions in that permit, proposed permit provision really do anything to regulate sound. So, we, the city also talks about the land use element and, and policy HC fourteen. Respectfully, I disagree with the city's interpretation of that policy. Essentially, what HC fourteen point three says is that it prohibits unnecessary excess of annoying noise sources that are inconsistent with, with the policy. So, that is a qualitative standard. Okay, we're not talking about numbers, we're not, we're not talking about measurements. We're talking about abstract, as the city manager, or the, the city planning commissioner kind of was, was talking about. So you've got evidence from neighbors that the activity on the parking lot is, they can hear it in their homes. That by definition, I think is a violation of HC fourteen point three. And so that, that needs to be analyzed, and it wasn't. Now, there's also a finding from the, a proposed finding made by the city attorney, that the project complies with that policy. But there's no analysis, and, and I'm sure the city's aware, under Topanga v County of Los Angeles, there's an obligation, when you're performing analysis, to connect the, to bridge the analytical gap between raw evidence and the conclusion. And that wasn't done here. All that the finding says is that the, the project complies with the policy. Okay, so there's no analysis there of the, of the evidence, or the facts. So, the next issue that I have with the project is that the staff report still has not performed the analysis required by its own municipal code. So, municipal, municipal code section nine point three-two point one hundred essentially states, and forgive me, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna read from it, "Notwithstanding any provision of this chapter, in addition thereto, it shall be unlawful for any person to willfully make or continue to cause to be made, or continue any loud, unnecessary, unusual noise with unreasonable, which unreasonably disturbs the peace and quiet of any neighborhood, which causes discomfort or annoyance to any reasonable person or of normal sensitivities residing in the area. The standards which shall be considered in determining whether a violation of the provisions of this section exist shall include the following. A, the volume, pitch, intensity of the noise, the duration, frequency of occurrence of the noise, whether the nature of the noise is typical or atypical of the area, whether the origin of the noise is natural, unnatural, controllable, or uncontrollable, the volume and intensity of the background noise, the proximity of the noise to the residential sleeping facilities, the nature and, and zoning of the area within the noise which the noise emanates, the time of day or night the noise occurs, whether the noise is recurrent, intermittent, or constant, whether the noise is produced by commercial or non-commercial activity, and finally, whether the noise, or whether the amplified sound is loud enough to be decipherable outside the property line." So that is a regulation in the city's own municipal code, which is not contained in the staff report that resulted in the initial approval, or in the staff report on appeal that's recommending approval to this project. That is another clear violation. And if this project is approved without that finding, I believe it would be an abuse of your discretion. Finally, the last point I want to raise is the, the city attorney has, I think I want to phrase this another way. Okay, so, I disagree with the interpretation of one of the municipal code sections, 9.32. 3.03A. Okay, the city attorney has stated that the appeal letter states that the ordinance provides that no person shall suffer on residential property a noise level more than six DVA above the local ambient at any point outside the property line and that this was a misquote on the appellant's behalf. The city attorney then provides the language of that code section, which states, "No person shall produce, suffer, or allow to be produced by any machine, device, or combination of the same residential property, a noise level more than six DVA above the local ambient on outside property of the property plane." The city attorney concludes that the standard only applies to noise generated on residential property. I believe that is a misinterpretation of that code. The, the section clearly states that no person shall produce, suffer, or allow to be produced on residential property. Therefore, if the, the word suffer applies to residential property, it's contemplating a harm that is experienced on residential property, like my clients have experienced at the hands of the academy based on their activities on the Michelin parking lot. So, with that, I, I, I would like to turn the council's attention back to the larger picture. I think the main issue here is that you have a project that is being approved on an MMD. That MMD is based on a prior document from 2011. That document, per the city's analysis, says that facts remain unchanged. Well, the facts have changed. As I previously stated, there's a K eight, there's K eight students on the premises and Michelin, the, the main issue, Michelin parking lot, has since that time been used for numerous activities that have not all been studied by the commission. So, I, I think the, the best course of action for the city is to send it back to the planning commission, for them to analyze the noise that's coming from each activity that's occurring on the parking lot. And then you have a, 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 an idea of what activities are the problem and what activities are not. And then you can decide for the activities that are offending, where, which activity should be relocated and, and to where. And I, I've given you a few options about where you can relocate those activities. So, with that, I think that's, that's all the time I'd like to take. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Any questions? Yes?
Thank you. I appreciate your, your presentation. Just one question about the relief sought, it's not entirely clear to me, particularly procedurally. Both you've stated and then a number of the public comment we received were, were advocating for a return of this matter to the planning commission. Is there anything in particular with respect to the planning commission process that, you know, prompts that request versus, you know, as has been stated in our discussion, this is a de novo review that we would undertake? Is there anything particular about the planning commission that's prompting that request versus continuing with the process here? And one would think that, I mean, just having been involved as the planning commission liaison, I would suspect that this would be a more streamlined process, not to disparage the planning commission, but just sending it back and forth, you know, just, just takes time. So, I just wondered if there's anything more that you can provide as the background to that request?
Absolutely. So, I, I think there needs to be additional analysis based on the fact that the commission has not analyzed what activities are occurring on the, on the parking lot. So, again, i- if, if the council were to, to decide tonight that this project should be approved and they're relying on the, the findings and, and that have been recommended to them, then not, it's, it will be making a decision that, that is based on a report that doesn't contain all the findings. So, I, I think at the bare minimum, in, in, in order to make the findings that are required by some of the, the code sections I mentioned, you need to have an idea about how loud the noise is, right? So, for, for example, i- if, if you're imposing a permit condition on the, on the parking lot and you want to regulate school assemblies that are amplified, for example, then I think at, at bare minimum, you need to know how loud those assemblies with amplified equipment are. Or, in the alternative, you know, I, I think another possible, another possible explanation would be, you know, you, you try to come up with a permit condition that, that moves the activity away from the parking lot and that, that is a way that you could do it without that analysis, I suppose. If, if that answers the question.
Yeah, I guess I just was, I mean, one, obviously, one of the options provided in the staff report was frankly for the, you know, the, the council to, you know, reject the permit. I mean, I, it was just interesting to me that the advocated position, you know, was not that the council make a decision one way or the other, but that it go back to the planning commission. And so, I was just wondering if there was any sort of procedural benefit that you, you appreciated from that, that process.
So, i- if, if they reject, i- if the council rejects the, the application, I, so, I really think that could be throwing out, you know, the, the baby with the bathwater because we're only challenging one aspect of, of, of the project. And so, I, again, I think we, that, that the neighbors and, and the, and the school can coexist. That, that's what I led with and that's what I believe. I, in order for that to happen, I think that there needs to be a full analysis of what's going on in that parking lot or the academy concedes that it'll move these activities elsewhere. And so, you know, there, there, there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of space to move it and that's why I question the, the nature of their land use strategy. Why are they, you know, why did they get approved for a temporary, you know, classrooms where the multi-purpose building would be? You know, that essentially nixes any possibility that that building could be placed in that location until those temporary classrooms are moved. And so, now, you know, they're expanding, they're expanding and hey, we want to use this parking lot, don't worry, it's not gonna be a problem. It's, they're putting the cart before the horse and I think that's why, you know, they, they need to, the, the city needs to step in and, and, and regulate the conduct since they're kind of going willy-nilly with, with their land use strategy. So, I, I hope that answers the question, Councilman.
Yes, thank you.
Does, may I ask a question then? Does the, does city council have the ability to make those changes instead of going back to the planning commission? Is that possible?
Yes, yes. So, what, what I heard basically, for lack of a better word, the parties are stipulating to all the issues except the use of, of the northwest parking lot.
So, the only, the only issue that the, the appeal letter addressed was the, the impacts that are coming from the use of the parking lot. Okay, so, all the other, the trees that are being cut down, that's, that's not at issue for this appeal. Okay, so, that's why, you know, it depends on, on, I, I guess on the ultimate decision from the council. You know, if it's to approve the project as is, as, as recommend, recommended by the city, then I think there could be problems because I, I think there are SEQA violations. You're relying on a 2011 document essentially when new facts have arisen. But if the decision is to relocate those activities, maybe to the southeastern corner of the property where there's already a field, then, you know, that may be, that, that may eliminate a lot of the problems. But I think at, at the end of the day, we want to be sure that, you know, for example, the, the proposed permit condition, it, it, it is essentially proposing all the activities that are causing the complaints. So, you know, there has to be some realization by the city that those are the very activities that are, that are why this appeal got filed in the first instance. So, yeah, it, it depends on what the ultimate decision of the city is, I, I suppose, the response.
Thank you, yeah. And I, I understand the, the, the appeal letter and what was in it, but in my mind, this appeal pops the whole thing back open again. That, that's why it's a de novo hearing, basically. But I just want to be clear that we're not, you're not talking about elevations or plain heights or anything or tree removal. Like you said, this is, this is, that's all kind of stipulated or agreed to. This specific appeal is only arguing and talking about the noise abatement issues on that and the use.
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct, yeah.
So, I know within the staff report, we saw excess parking lots, but, you know, as I'm thinking about the parking lot and I looked at the overhead, there's about twelve, twelve spaces taken up by the, the sport court with the basketball stanchions or whatever you call them, the hoops. But then on the, the north sideline, there's, there's parking and if you're playing a, a game, I'm assuming cars can't be there. So, are they, you know, basically, most of that parking lot has been, is taking up beyond its use for parking. Do they still meet the threshold of parking if you basically took that whole parking lot out?
I believe they have an excess number of parking spots. I think more than fifty-six, I believe.
Okay, so, more than that parking lot, okay. And to your point, I, I see what you're saying though, as far as the exceptions are, that are, the exceptions allow for the things that cause the problems. It, it, can we, let's say there's, they want, they want to have an assembly. I know it's a, it's a process, but can we tie a temporary use permit to any of these, those, those things outside of just parking? If they want to do something beyond, they have to request a temporary use permit? I know there's a master plan and a CUP.
Yeah, if, if they're gonna be utilizing that lot for special event uses or filming, yes, there's a TUP to address that or a CUP to address that. But for school-related events, this falls under the authority or the purview of this master plan.
But we could, as a part of this master plan, we could stip-, make stipulations to that.
We can, yeah.
And, and I guess, you know, one of the things in my mind, it'd be good to get, when we get the presentation from the, the academy in two weeks, it'd be nice to know what those activities are. I mean, I, I'm thinking, and, and it would be nice to know frequency and kind of scale or size. I, I, I'm just wondering, you know, if we could move the, the recreational activities and the fundraising activities out and all you've got is lunch there, for example, you know, can we get rid of three-quarters of it or something like that? You know, I imagine that, that sports, you know, if, if, sports, if you're moving and you, and you move down, I mean, there's other roads and there's another parking lot. I mean, I, I don't know how long a walk it is, can't be that far, it's less than a block because it's a block, right? So, you know, could we move that, those activities until they get the temporary court built to another parking lot and then the only thing you've got up there is, is lunch, which lunch tends to be a tighter timeframe, you know? If, if you've got recreation, part of your recreation can be going to the location. You know, it seems like that may address a large portion of the.
I mean, frankly, we could also limit what, what activities occur there. I mean, I know they've put up basketball hoops, but I know for a fact that the middle school took down all of the hoops on their basketball courts and there's no more basketball at the middle school because of the noise issues with the surrounding neighbors. So, and that's, I don't think even temporary, that's, I think, fairly permanent. So, I, you know, there are, I think, especially if, if it's at a limited period while they're building an, an alternative space, you know, I think there's also, we could also require, you know, that certain activities not occur, right? Like lunch, lunchtime ambient noise is very different than basketball ambient noise or, you know, those kinds of activities. And, and to me, that could also be explored because I think it would also provide an incentive, to Commissioner Hutt's point about deadlines and timelines.
Right, yeah.
Provide some incentive to, to get that done sooner rather than later if the activities permitted were, were more limited than they prefer. I mean, I don't want to be punitive, but I also feel like that might be, obviously, they're asking for temporary variances, you know, I think it's also reasonable to ask for temporary, you know, cessation of certain activities from them while this is all pending. Just an idea.
I, I had a question that, that Mr. Sanders had, had said on three different situations that there's a violation of, of SEQA. City attorney, do you agree that there's a violation of SEQA as question number one? And question number two is, so, what is the, the potential remedies that happened in a violation of SEQA?
Counselor, may I broaden the question and try to address?
You absolutely can, always.
Okay, so, let, let me begin by the points on which Mr. Sanders and I agree. So, in my, in the memo I drafted for the city council, I have a list of recommendations. Those include that the city council, during its review, should consider the general plan policy regarding noise as well as the CR modere municipal code section cited by Mr. Sanders, the qualitative one, regarding noise. I, I don't think necessarily that the planning commission's decision is flawed, even if the planning commission didn't consider those general plan standards specifically. But regardless, in order to strengthen the administrative record, I do recommend that the planning commission consider general plan policy HC-14.1, objective HC-14, and CR modere municipal code, section 9.32.100. Now, those are the points on which we agree. The point on which, the points on which we disagree with respect to noise are first, I, I disagree with Mr. Sanders' interpretation of noise, the noise section 9.32.030A, he read it out loud. It says, "No person, no person shall produce, comma, suffer or allow to be produced by any machine or device, comma, or any combination of same." Now, suffer or allow to be produced by any machine or device, I interpret differently. Mr. Sanders interpreted to mean that you won't, you won't suffer that noise on your residential property. I mean, I understand it to mean that you won't suffer another person to produce it by a machine or a device on a residential property. So, I don't think that section actually applies to Alverna in this specific case and I think there's a reasonable interpretation otherwise. With respect to the point about remanding to the planning commission, as Mayor Protem pointed out, the city council here can do anything the planning commission can do with respect to adopting mitigation and conditions. However, if it's the city council's decision to ask Alverna to produce some additional report, likely Alverna won't be able to do that in time because the city council needs to render its decision within thirty days of this hearing, per our municipal code. So, so if additional studies are going to be required, then it would make sense to either deny the appeal or deny the CUP or to remand it back to the planning commission. The, the SEQA point raised regarding the piecemeal consideration, this is the first time I've, I've, I've heard that argument. It's something I'll definitely have to study and I, and before the next city council meeting with the staff report, I'll circulate whatever my analysis is on point and I don't know what the answer is there. I'll, I'll have to do some further research on that. And then with respect to the point about. And then with respect to the point about that the parking lot is being used as, in a way that it wasn't used in 2011 and that now that's a substantial change that triggers some additional level of CQ analysis, that's, that also requires further study. So, I'll need to speak to Alverno and figure out how was it used in 2011? And then also to figure out whether playground-type use of a parking lot constitutes a significant change for purposes of triggering additional CQ analysis. So, the CQ questions unfortunately I'll have to put off until the next meeting. But with respect to the noise, those are my opinions.
Thank you. So, Mr. Sanders brought up nine point three-two point one zero zero. I didn't have my computer up, so I looked on my phone. That's the general noise ordinance, but there's also a specific ordinance, nine dot three-two dot zero seven zero for schools. Does, does the general ordinance override anything within the specificity of noise ordinance for, let's say, schools?
If, I'm pulling it up now, but I believe the ordinance, or the section of that ordinance you're referring to is actually intended to protect schools from noise. And it has nothing to do with noise generated by schools. I think it says something like, "A person shall not produce some kind of excessive noise next to a school in a way that disrupts a school or a church."
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Okay.
So, that's similar to the noise generator thing that you're, you were disagreeing with because.
Right, so it wouldn't apply to Alverno in this specific case?
Gotcha, gotcha, okay.
And to clarify, in our discussions with Alverno, they had, they had taken the position that there are no noise standards that apply to them, qualitative or quantitative, with respect to the school. And in Mr. Sanders' appeal letter, he cites both qualitative and quantitative standards that he believes apply. It's my interpretation that only the qualitative standards apply, not the quantitative standards.
Yes, please.
I received, I assume we all did, a thumb drive with recordings on it. I listened to them. What, how is that, what are we supposed to do with that? And what, can you interpret that for me?
So, I think the relevance of the recordings is to show that, that, so, and this goes to the, to the point that was just made about qualitative standards. So, and my opinion, municipal code section nine point three-two point one hundred applies and that's a qualitative standard, right? There's no numbers, there's no DBA measurement. So, it's just a matter of, hey, is this noise perceptible and is it being a nuisance, right? So, if that's the case, then, you know, if a neighbor is recording a basketball game that's taking place on the Michelinda parking lot and, you know, you can hear that basketball game in the front yard or maybe inside, that has to be substantial evidence that there's a violation of this qualitative standard or that could provide substantial evidence based on which the body could find a violation of that, of that municipal code section. So, I think that's the relevance.
So, that was supplied us with the qualitative standard in mind because there was no decibel readings associated with this sound.
Right, right, correct. I think there may have been one sound recording.
I got two PDF files, but I didn't get anything on the.
Yeah, so I.
Right.
But none with a meter?
No.
Right, so, so again, you know, that's, that's just going to the point to show that if the, if, you know, a neighbor can hear the sound in their yard, in their home, you know, is that a violation of that section? I think that evidence goes to that point. And the rest of the qualitative standards, to be honest, yeah.
Thank you.
I have two questions and this might be addressed more to our city codes. Is this kind of an analogy of, say, a barking dog where it doesn't hit the decimal amounts, but it's the annoyance factor? Is that what, first question, is that what you are alluding to? So, that's the qualitative?
I suppose, I mean, just going down the list here of nine point three-two point one hundred, you know, the volume, the pitch, the intensity, you know? So, that's, that's a question of fact. And what evidence do you have of that? You know, so, yes, to an extent, I think that's right. You know, how loud is that noise? You know, how often does it happen? When is it happening?
So, on this point, I agree with Mr. Sanders. The city council on those findings could determine, could make a determination that this noise is unreasonable and then have to go through this analysis, of course. But that's, that's a council, that's a decision for the council. So, I, I won't be giving any opinions on whether or not qualitatively speaking, this is, this, there's a violation or not. City staff believes that there isn't. As city attorney, that's not my decision. It's a policy decision and an interpretative exercise for this council.
My second question is, is there, the other parking lots that are in our city that are used for multipurpose, like at Gooden School, at Bethany, and I don't know about St. Maria's, but I know that Gooden School and Bethany use part of their parking sections as activities. Do those, do we have regulations on those schools and those, how they use their parking lots?
We do not.
We, when we, it, when we looked into this during the planning commission phase, we determined that the city has never enforced this noise ordinance against a school before. Not, not to say it can't begin because we have administrative, I mean, prosecutorial discretion to enforce and not enforce. But that's why it was a little, all these questions are very novel for the city because we've never had to use nine point three-two point one hundred with respect to school noise.
Well, and just to further that, isn't there also a procedural difference here? Because I think the other schools sort of were grandfathered in because their zoning was changed or designated during the general plan update, but none of them have applied for a general plan. So, that this sort of, this level of review has never really been done anywhere else. Is that?
Master.
Master plan, sorry.
And to add to that, you know, their usage has been the same. Gooden is a, you know, a K through eight and has been for a very long time, right?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if their usage of their parking lot has changed. I mean, I think that's just.
Right, but what we're seeing here in Alverno is we're seeing a change in students that are there. Whereas, you know, for what, close to sixty years, it had been a high school. And now, in the last three years, it's become a high school, well, it's been a TK to high school.
Yeah, that's fair. I just, I guess I was just pointing out that I'm not sure we can really draw much from the other schools because there's never been a level of review for them because they've sort of existed under this sort of procedural posture that has changed for Alverno because they're now in the phase, in the, in the process of getting this master plan. None of the other schools have that and, or even, you know, contemplating that. And so, I just think it's a different, unfortunately, it's a different kind of.
I was looking at, because Bethany didn't have that parking lot that is also multi-use now until, I don't know, maybe five, five, ten years ago or less? The parking lot that's there, that wasn't, they must have applied for a permit for it. And if you apply for a permit to have it built, it had, it must have said for parking. But it's not used for just parking.
Yeah, I don't know, that's a good question. Sure, Bethany, are we now opening that up?
We have to be universal, we can't just look at one campus.
So, I'm trying to envision what the prayer for relief is here, right? So, obviously, on one end of the spectrum, that parking lot's only used for parking. We can come to a determination whether or not that's appropriate. But is there, is there any consideration for some sort of use in that lot other than parking that's reasonable? And, you know, help us kind of craft something that would be reasonable if the council agrees on that.
So, I take a look at the, I think that gets back to, well, let's identify all the activities that are going on in that parking lot. So, based on what I have, it's physical education class, recess, play, lunch, school assemblies, award ceremonies with amplifying equipment. That's both of those last two. Dancing celebrations with music on loudspeakers, school desk, school dedications, fundraisers, sports activities. So, you know, I, and this is something I would have to talk to my clients about, okay? But I think the main offenders are going to be the sports activities, awards, you know, assemblies, award ceremonies, dance, dancing with amplified equipment. You know, the, the school recess, lunch, that's something I would have to talk to them about. But I, I think those are the main offenders.
Thank you for that. I mean, I'm, yeah, I'm contemplating like, what's a normal school use? Obviously, pee and recess and lunch and those things. The other things are maybe not, that kind of go beyond what normal, the normal school day includes. And I don't know what our purview is, how deep we can go as far as restricting the normal school day, especially being a Catholic school and those things. They have certain protections and I want to make sure that we're not overstepping our purview here. Yet, we're listening to our residents and trying to figure out a good solution for everybody in the area. That's helpful, thank you. And I know you need to still talk to your clients about this.
Thank you.
Yeah, it might be helpful if you were to return or if your clients are going to speak at the next meeting to maybe have a little of that refined a bit.
Absolutely, sure.
Thank you.
I guess, you know, from my perspective, you know, we've gone into some of the code and some of the legal and all of that and into studies. I'm really hoping that we can, and I think this is where the direction's heading, sort of hearing the other comments are, is we can craft something that is, that works for both parties. If we start going into studies or going back to the planning commission or anything else, this just goes on a lot longer and, you know, there's, there's a noise concern here. I'd like to try to address it and be able to try to get some relief on it. I think the other thing is, is that I, I don't see, I thank Commissioner Hutt for being here and his comments of, you know, that he doesn't see that there's a whole lot that the planning commission can bring to this. And so, you know, it is something that, from an expedience perspective, we may be able to deal here. I'm hoping that we can deal with in another meeting, maybe two, based on kind of what I'm, at least what I'm hearing in this conversation. So, I'll just throw that out there as part of the discussion.
I don't think we have to. If we have to act in thirty days, we'd have to have a special meeting.
From today.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that correction.
Question for staff. I noticed that there are no representatives from Alverno here today. Were you guys notified that they weren't, would not be here? Kind of surprised, and do we have any idea why they didn't show up?
Yeah, I, I knew they weren't prepared to speak today. But they, but they didn't notify us that they'd be absent.
Typically, you show up to hear the other side, right?
Yeah, I'm sure they're watching, but I, I would have assumed that they would have been here quietly listening.
Okay, thank you.
Could have been helpful because it would help us.
Well, that's going to be the twenty eighth, right?
I understand, but, yeah.
Any more questions for the appellantants while they're, while they're here regarding their arguments? Would you like to come speak? Please.
I guess I wanted to put it in some more perspective here. We were active in 2010, 2011, working on the master plan and the CUP back then. And to us, the multipurpose building was the coup de grace for us. That was ten years ago. The noise from two hundred high school girls was still causing problems. And so, we said, okay, we're going to get this building to contain the noise. Ten years goes by and the building doesn't get built. But instead, they put in temporary classrooms there and say, hey, we're going to add K through eight here. So, what we've gone from is, in 2010, when neighbors were complaining about noise of a high school of two hundred with some movie and party activity going on, now we have a K through twelve school. So, the outdoor activity at this school is nonstop. Every hour, there is some group outside making noise, making different types of noise. Every weekend, there is a party, there is a function, there are crowds. And then the movie shoots come. And for days, we are inconvenienced. So, our appeal here regarding the Grand View, the Michelinda parking lot, it's our last bastion of hope and sanctity. They came to get this CUP for this expanded school. And in the meantime, a second CUP was birthed for all the villa activities, all of which were granted more days of activity than they previously had. So, we've gone from a twenty days of parties to forty days. And the movies is another, just weeks. And this is all in addition to the school stuff. And the school stuff has tripled because we're now three schools instead of one. And so, I'm telling you, somebody who's lived in this house for thirty years, just the progression of noise has increased. And that's why we're here appealing this master plan because we need to look at the master plan, what, everything that's happening on this property. And so, here tonight, we're only talking about just some activities that are going on in one corner. But that's literally just the tip of the iceberg. And if we want to address the whole iceberg, man, I'm all in, I'll do that. But it's my understanding that the ship has sailed, so we're just trying to protect. When I come home every day, I mean, there's something going on on that blacktop. Basketball playing with whistles, volleyball playing with whistles. When they do these afternoon practices on the parking lot, you have cars lined up on Michelinda at four and five in the afternoon waiting for practice to come up. So, they aren't using their parking lot, they aren't using their driveway for the activity of parking and driving. It's the sports field, so now we're once again inconveniencing the street. Friday, I came home. Michelinda, Grand View, and Wilson are all double parked, both sides of the street, solid. Nothing on the, nothing on the Alverno calendar, no idea what's going on. But three streets are packed. Parents are going in there in dark suits, so we think maybe it's a memorial. But there's kids playing in the playground. We have no idea, but we get our street blocked off for three hours while this surprise activity, in addition to everything else that goes on there. And it's just, everything is always an exception. Well, it's a school activity today and it's a religious activity this day. And, well, it's a memorial that we aren't charging any money for today, but you all can understand. Well, we're tired of understanding. We, all the other schools in town, they shut down on the weekends. The churches in town, they, they shut down during the week. And, I mean, even the Buccaneer shuts down in the morning. But, yeah, we, there is no rest for us. So, this, this is where we're coming from and this is why we are saying. So, no, we would like to see no activity there, you know, in the, I said, no, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Mrs. Stevens.
Good evening, I'm Kristen Stevens. I guess I have to do that. Part of the problem I have is with the administration of this school has changed over the years. And at one point, we were able to have discussions with them. And it has just dissipated and that has been the problem. We will talk with our attorney. But when you can't have negotiations with somebody across the street, they call the police and say, oh, so I had cancer surgery. And I went over and say, hello, hello, can you just like keep it down? Apparently, they called the police on me, said I was harassing them. All I wanted to do is get ahold of the coaches. I didn't yell obscenities, I didn't scream at them, I was like, look, I said, I just need some rest. But no, they called the police on me apparently and made a police report about it. So, that's not being neighborly and we're kind of tired of being. So that's not being neighborly and we're kind of tired of being neighborly towards them. We aren't making obscenit, obscenities, noises at them. We understand that code. It's a little frustrating. Go on, you'd love to just pay them back. But these things weren't happening until the K through eight. It got worse. They were also doing it during lockdown, but not to the excess that it has become since twenty twenty-one. I have written to them, I have asked them, I said, can we negotiate something? And I get affirmed, no. And that's just part of the problem, that if you can't negotiate person to person, it's unfortunate that we have to hire someone to come here and represent us for all the things we've already said at the planning commission meetings. We don't wanna be their CUP police because every time we have tried to call on something about the CUP, hopefully the police department is better. We were called effing Karens. I have recorded this through the social media. We have had people in town say, hey, they're talking about you down at Starbucks picking up their coffee, about what jerks the neighbors are. I have documentation showing that there was a large gathering and I called to ask, is this possible? You know, we're in lockdown, just wondering, they're having a graduation. I was lied to by the police, told me they're picking up school supplies. And I said, no, ma'am. They've got the graduation march. I can see right from my window. We overlooked that whole parking lot. I said, they're having a graduation, an in-person graduation. So in the social media, it says, those effing Karens, those effing neighbors, I didn't send those police out. I didn't dispatch anyone. Those effing neighbors. I've got it. It's all documented. It's taken me a while. Mm, I'm sorry, I have a really dry mouth. But there are other places. This is kind of what's being forgotten. They, they, we were at these twenty ten, uh, negotiations, neighbor meetings. It was begged of us, please give us this multipurpose gym. We're like, yeah, okay, all right, great. It was studied for that corner for sports. And I was at that, this meeting where they said, no, it's just too congested, it's going to be too noisy. They, they, I guess they knew that the sound traveled up. Whereas this field in the southeast corner or portion was better suited, they said. I, I tried to get the transcripts from those, but I was there, I have the noise notes, and it's even in some of the documentation. The impact would be too great to put it in the area of the Michelinda parking lot at this time. So because I have been met with such irreverence, even bullying when I've been ca, I've called, I have to document by email. I cannot call because I don't know what's gonna get said to me. So I prefer to put it in an email to even just have it documented with Alverno because they've been incredibly rude over the years instead of just saying, hey, let's sit down and work it out. We went to all the neighborhood meetings. They're the same complaints and Mr. Farsing was sitting there, seemed pretty amenable. I thought we were gonna get something done, but it's always, we'll consider it. I have lots of emails that say, we'll take that into consideration and we'll get back to you. They never do. And so it's very difficult to say, any activity that goes on there, the, the, the history with this school has been, they will make an excuse that gives them some kind of alternative out. So I don't know what to do as part of a devil's advocate. And I just don't wanna get into it with them. I prefer it's like, have your school, you have so many other places on this very large campus, you've already been approved for. So why are you sticking it to us in the upper parking lot? Not only us, our neighbors along Michelinda. They get it even worse noise-wise, apparently. Yeah. So I would like to say, sure, just have recess. But then what'll ha, or, or lunch, so it'll be lunch. And what happens is kids eat ten, fifteen minutes and they're out running around playing. What am I gonna have to do when I'm having a conference call or I'm trying to compose something for my business? And I just hear these screeches? Or the teachers blow three whistles? They can't just raise their hand and say, hey, line up. They're yelling at their students. That's how they gather them. They blow three whistles. Then there's the sports. You have coaches who are yelling out their instructions, directions. I understand they need to do that. I understand that children need to play. I work with children with disabilities. It's very important. But give them a proper place to do it, and it isn't that parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stevens. Any, uh, any more questions or, um, we looking to wrap this, this up, this portion?
So I just, I, I'm trying to think through, so, um, the upper school campus, basically, it, 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 it starts kind of at Grand View and goes halfway through. And right now, they're all parking on the Wilson Street side. Is that right?
Yeah.
And, and is, and I apologize, I haven't, I haven't walked through the whole campus there. Is there a through point from the Michelinda parking lot to what's the, where the building and the new parking is gonna be? Is there, it looks like there's a road around that. I can't tell if there's a road from the Michelinda parking lot around behind the building.
There's a driveway that's in front of the multipurpose building and it joins the parking lot. So that driveway continues and traverses through the entirety of the campus in between the future multipurpose building and lower school and the villa and exits to Highland.
I, I, I'm thinking on the, on the northern side. I, I'm just, I, I, I'm trying to think about, you know, if, if we, we were to, to, to say move the activities. I'm just trying to understand and maybe before the next meeting, I need to go over and walk the campus just to, to understand kind of what the options are. Cause I'm not, um, I'm not seeing kind of where things could get moved.
So one of the things that I was told, uh, why this, the Michelinda parking lot was selected is because it's relatively flat compared to some of the other lots.
I know this is proposed, but are you looking?
I, that's kind of what I, and I, and I couldn't tell here if that, if, if that was there so that your students could walk, you know, around that way? Or is there a way out this backside? I mean, that's, that's what I'm trying to think about is, you know, can, can, and, and I, and I hear you, Director Gonzalez, is that, um, yeah, if, if you're gonna play ball, you wanna have a flat parking lot and there may not be anything else that's, that's flat like that. I think I've exhausted my brain tonight.
Okay. You know, there, there was a, there was a recommendation, uh, to disclose any ex-party, uh, communications. Um, so I, I think we should probably do that this time before we convene to the next meeting.
Mayor, if, if individuals, if individual council members intend on going to the site, it might make sense to forego it this time and then make a full disclosure at the next meeting before you make your decision. Up to you.
Do we have to do that in a formal manner? Obviously, we can't do it at that less, two or less.
Ri- right. So the, the purpose of the ex-party disclosure is, is just to, is to let the public know and to make sure we get in the administrative record, anything you learned that wasn't already included in the staff report or in the public comments. So if you visually saw something that you learned that wasn't already reflected in what you've heard today or in the, in the staff reports, or if you learned something from talking to someone that wasn't reflected, that, that's when you, that's what you would disclose.
That just needs to be done before our
A decision is made.
A decision. Okay, so let's, let's hold off, uh, because I'm assuming that some of us might wanna do a site visit and I know we only have thirty days to, to get this decision made, but, uh, yeah, let's hold off. That's a good recommendation.
Um, in terms of site visits, should, I mean, I don't feel like we should just show up. I mean, should we coordinate that kind of like we did with respect to the, um, Mills Act property that we considered a few meetings ago?
Yes, I will have to contact the school and see what times would be available.
I think it would be helpful, if possible, during the school day.
I agree.
But, and, and there's also nothing stopping the individual council members, just as Commissioner Hutt did, to drive by during school hours and observe from the street, of course. But if you want to get onto the property, best to coordinate.
If we, if we learn something outside of talking with, with anybody, um, just by viewing through the, the fence, would that constitute an ex-party, um, communication?
If, if, if there's an observation of something you learned that's outside of the administrative record, it's best to make sure it gets into the administrative record.
Okay, makes sense, yeah.
So the disclosure is not merely, I went and visited the school. It's, I went and visited the school and this was what I discovered, determined, whatever, you know, A, B, C, not, not just the fact of it.
Right, because, and the whole purpose being, um, both the applicant and the appellant deserve to know what the basis of your decision is. And if the basis of your decision is something that you learned outside of this hearing, it's, it's, it's only fair that they know that.
So if we have some, some qualitative opinions that are kind of made regarding noise, um, both sides, uh, should know that. Okay, that makes sense. Any more questions before we, um, we adjourn to our next meeting?
One more clarification before we close.
Please.
Um, during Vincent's presentation, you said the next meeting was February twenty-eighth. It's my understanding, it's March seventh.
Uh, we, we're the second and fourth Tuesday of, of every month, so it, fourteen days from today is the twenty-eighth. So yes, we will meet on the twenty-eighth.
Okay, we made it clear, we were out of town on the twenty-eighth and anyway, yeah, but.
We got home Friday night to a message that came at five thirty-six on Friday and called Mr. Reynoso on the, uh, eight o'clock. And we discussed that there was a situation and he wanted to know if we could make two meetings. We didn't expect this to be two meetings. And I said, well, I have a prior crisis to deal with. And so he said, oh, March seventh would be fine. So that needs to be discussed.
And I, I apologize for that. I thought we were gonna have a follow-up and I, and I
No.
Okay, so we did have that, we did have that conversation, um, and I don't know if we can proceed to a March seventh meeting? We may have to have a special meeting before that.
We, yeah, so, so if, if the appellant is amenable to having a, a March date, uh, we'll, we'll need to talk to Alverno to see if they're also willing because it could, if we push it to March and it's contrary to our code, uh, and it prejudices their position, obviously, it's not fair to them. So we'd have to speak to Alverno to determine whether or not, uh, they are also amenable to a March, that, that March date.
It's thirty days from today?
The seventh is the first Tuesday of the month.
That'll be a special meeting.
So it is within the thirty days then?
I mean, today's the fourteenth, right? So this was
The seventh would be, would be a special meeting.
That's a special meeting.
And it would be the, and it would be the
And it would be within thirty days.
Twenty-first day from today.
Right, the first, well, even the, I guess I'm looking at the calendar, the first meeting in March, which is the fourteenth, would be, I think, cause that's thirty days.
Twenty-eight days, probably.
Or yeah, less.
Because February is twenty-eight days, yes.
So we could do the first, we could do the first meeting in, given how February is, we could do the first meeting in March, the regular meeting.
And not have to call a special meeting?
And not have to call a special.
Well, we would have to determine, make our determination at that meeting.
Correct. One way or another.
Which I, you know, I would prefer, but what if, what if?
We'll just have to do it.
If we need more.
We'll have to give Alverno a chance to
Yeah.
Make sure they can make it.
They'll still do that on the fourteenth, is what they're saying.
Yeah, the, basically, the, 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 the plan that we were gonna have on the twenty-eighth would just move to the fourteenth, presumably.
Mayor, and if the city council can't make a decision, you could, you could send it back to the planning commission on that day.
Yeah, that's not my preference. Um, I mean, are we amenable to maybe a special meeting on the fir, on the, uh, seventh? I don't know if that works for us, um, as a potential.
Only if we couldn't do the fourteenth.
Okay.
Only if Alverno can't make the fourteenth.
Yeah, so if you could, if you could talk
They need to get them a good shot at doing this.
Yeah, if we, yeah, let's try that. Is that okay for you, uh, Mrs. Stevens? Does that work?
Yeah, I'm sorry. We all thought it was gonna be January twenty-eighth, so this would have never been a problem, but, okay.
But as you can see, we couldn't finish this in one night.
Yeah, and Mr. Reynoso had explained that.
Yeah.
It was new to us. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are we okay with, with that date? Yes. Okay.
So we won't discuss this at all, the next council meeting, it'll all be on March fourteenth?
Yes.
I, I, that's assuming that Alverno's comfortable with it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Regardless of whether Alverno's comfortable with it, it's, if you set the date of the hearing, that's what it is. It just has to happen within thirty days.
Okay.
Okay.
Any issue with the, I guess it was just the staff report that mentioned the continuance to a date certain? So we could, we would just change that now by virtue of our action?
Right, so, so the, the motion would be this new date.
So mayor, I would move to continue this public hearing until, um, March fourteenth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carry his unanimously. We are continuing the public hearing to March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Move to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye, we are adjourned.